Special meeting, budget workshop for the Hendersonville City Council. And take it away.
There you go. Good morning, Mayor, Member City Council. Welcome back to our budget workshop for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. What you have before you is your schedule. So we're getting started right at eight thirty and we'll spend the first just some introductory remarks here for the next little while. I'll also go through your core values and beliefs that the council drafted during your budget retreat, their draft. We again want to ask you to approve them today, but put them out there so you know what we're using to develop the budget and ultimately ask you to adopt those as part of the budget documents at your June meeting. We'll about eight forty-five or so, we'll jump in and do enterprise funds. Adam, we'll go over the enterprise funds. We'll take a break about ten o'clock, come back about ten fifteen or so and do governmental funds and do rates and then do rate and fees every view about about noon and then we'll break for an hour between twelve fifteen and one fifteen. We've left lunch open, kind of free flowing, welcome to for us to go and have lunch on Main Street and then come back for a special presentation by Senator Edwards at one fifteen and any additional direction or discussion at three o'clock, we'll finish up, but we feel like we'll fill up, finish well before three o'clock. So this is just kind of a conservative schedule and we hope we'll be ahead of schedule all day. So Brian, if you'll jump to, so the budget development for this year, Brian and I have been talking about this. I've kind of labeled this budget as the chicken and the egg budget. We are dealing with lots of, as you know, growth, changes in our community, lots of uncertainty. And so we, the kind of the key factors we've looked at to develop the budget are, you know, growing pains with the growth now plus what we see in the future, right? What we see, you know, we have close to eight hundred to a thousand residential units that have either been approved or were no, are coming come, are coming to you in the future. So we have a very strong economy. This region of the country has been labeled as a safe city, which means people that are escaping areas that are subject to wildfires, hurricanes, tornadoes. It's kind of a new migration to safe communities. So we're seeing folks and pandemic for that matter, coming into our region. So we'll see that. We, we, we've tried to identify where we're vulnerable, where we have issues related to we need to beef up accountability related to, we're getting more federal grants and more state grants that have more audit requirements and things. So we're trying to beef up how we're, where we're vulnerable there. We're also, as it relates to public safety, where we're vulnerable as it relates to the number of people that we have serving in those departments and across the board. Where we're vulnerable, continuous improvement. I know that's a key component for this city council and I think it'll be a key focus as we go forward. There'll be discussions, not only how we improve what we have today, but I know there's, there's interest in park development. There's interest in just improving the services we provide. So we're starting to lay the groundwork and plan for that going to, going forward. And we've also are adding fuel to the fire and the fact that we are, people recognize that we're a great community, we're a safe community and we're, we're walkable and lots of interest in people living inside the city, lots of interest in development in the city, industrial, commercial development. We've had lots of interests, partnership for economic development. We're actually hearing from industries that want to be closer in the city of Hendersonville. So that's very positive, but also want to have that smart growth approach and deal with growth in a way that preserves our community. The way our citizens wanted to, you know, they come here for a reason. And so we want to carry that on going forward. And you'll hear about that as we talk about comprehensive planning and transportation and planning as we go into this budget. So, you know, it's a chicken and egg and because we, we're, we're growing fast, we're catching up on some things that we're, we're vulnerable. And what comes first, right? As it relates to the expense or the revenue, a lot of this, you know, I mentioned the thousand residential units. Five hundred or more of those have been approved, probably six or seven hundred of those have been approved. But we know we won't see the revenue for twenty-four months. So by the time they build out, so how do we move forward and put the staffing in place in a way that we have the staffing and the equipment and what we need when the services are needed? And we'll talk about that particularly as it relates to solid waste collection, water across the board. I could, I could go across the board. But that's kind of the chicken and the egg. How do we, how do we balance that? So, and again, to meet your priority of continuous improvement. So that, those are the themes for this, this budget in this morning. And you'll see that throughout today and be glad to answer questions and we'll talk about that more as, as we go forward. So at this point, I want to jump over to the our core values and beliefs. We had a great exercise during your retreat. And this is what we heard from council and this is how we tried to put things in, into play. I'm particularly proud of this document because the current council developed it. Prior councils adopted cool mission statements and vision statement, but this is your core values and belief. This is not set in stone. So if we heard something wrong or you want to change those, we'll be glad to do that. But we're pretty proud of, of what we've come up with and, but it is still a draft and very open to other changes and things like that. So Brian, if you'll go to the first slide. So the first belief is that the city, city of Hendersonville believes municipal government should be nonpartisan. And there's several statements that we've added. And if you'll just hit all of them, Brian, I'll talk as we go through. So to clarify that statement, political affiliations are not productive to solving problems of local communities. City leaders and staff must lead by example and meet regularly with people who have different points of view. And then city leaders and staff must maintain an awareness of local, state and national political trends, but must lead the city in a manner that serves all community members. So we felt like the, the, the belief there is that we heard the council say that this is a nonpartisan board and then we had the clarifying statements to, to, to try to clarify what we felt like that meant. So that's the first belief. And again, we'll be glad to accept feedback between now and, and approval in June so that we make sure we're, we've got your true core value and belief. If you'll go to the next value. Thank you, Brian. The second item is the value is that the city of Hendersonville values open, transparent communication and trust with the community and each other. The clarifying statements being the city will openly communicate with the public and each other to ensure information about services, policies and programs are available to all. The city will build trust through ethical and transparent leadership. The city will share information and solicit, solicit feedback prior to the implementation of new programs and policies. I know that's a key value for the city council. And the city will be open to concerns and comments from all stakeholders. It will ensure the community can easily speak to leaders without the fear of retribution and embarrassment. Clarifying statements, what we heard from you. The third, the belief is the city of Hendersonville believes community members expect services to be delivered at a high level. The city will deliver services at a high level to make people feel their taxes and fees are being used effectively and to encourage others to live in the city. The city will deliver services in a manner that ensures the safety of the community. And the city will deliver services in a manner that limits the disruption of our community members' daily lives to the greatest extent possible. Again, these are statements that we have heard from the city council and direction that we have given that if, in that last one being, you know, if we're doing a, a street project or something, we want to make sure that we provide good information and we communicate. We try to limit that disruption within the community as much as possible. The third, the next value, the city of Hendersonville values all community members through promoting diversity, equity, inclusion. The city must evaluate all laws, policies and rules to ensure that they can be implemented, enforced in a fair and equitable manner. The city must evaluate all current and future programs, projects or initiatives to ensure they build a develop, develop a cult, a culture where differences are valued. And the city must ensure that leaders and staff consistently work to build trust and positive relationships throughout our entire community. Diversity and inclusion, something we have definitely heard this council say over the last couple of years. Next is environmental sustainability. The city of Hendersonville believes environmental sustainability is critical to preserve in the community for future generations. I know this, this particular belief is shared by the entire council because all five of you talked to me about it on a regular basis and how important this is. So we think this is the, is a very critical belief that the city will evaluate environmental sustainability of all projects and programs while maintaining a solid relationship with residential and business development. The city believes that it's our responsibility to protect all natural resources and environment through implementation of sustainable and responsible programs. And the city must lead by example by evaluating all city operations to ensure that they protect or repair the natural environment and environmental sustainability. Couple of these I'll talk about, I know it's important to the council to, to be environmentally sustainable, but we also know that we have to provide, we have to have that positive relationship with, with our residential and business development, that development and growth continue, has to continue to happen for our, for us to have a viable economy. And so we need to provide that balance related to environmental sustainability as well as development. And then also the last one, you know, particularly what comes to mind is leading, evaluating operations for repair of the natural environment is particularly as we've discussed improvements to our sewer system into our wastewater plant as it relates to the resolution of intent that you adopted to, to eliminate sewer sanitary sewer overflows to the greatest extent possible. So that really comes to mind and is indicative of this current belief that we want to be our, all of our systems and operations to be natural environment and environmentally sustainable. Thank you. The next value is the city of Hendersonville values its employees and must support them to ensure the provision of high quality service to its residents. Must provide growth opportunities to employees and educational tools to allow them to grow in their roles and responsibilities. We must respect and pay employees fairly and competitively. They must support employees providing a safe and hazard free workplace. We're only as good as our team and the council has told us that repeatedly and is shared in this particular value statement. And then the city of Hendersonville believes that it must pursue and provide opportunity for responsible growth. The city will establish and maintain policies and programs that encourage economic opportunity and help grow small business and entrepreneurship. The city will work with our community to provide educational opportunities about growth and its impact on economic vitality and quality of life. The city will encourage responsible growth that provides opportunities for success for all segments of our community. And the city will make efforts to generate affordable housing options and reduce the impacts of high cost of living within our community. Again, things that I've heard from the entire city council about promoting small business and entrepreneurship, not getting in the way providing those educational opportunities that are folks that may not understand how to to, to work and, you know, to grow their, their business and entrepreneurship, work, develop partnerships, responsible growth, and we have to have opportunities for all segments. And then obviously affordable housing is, is a key factor. So people can live and work in our community. And then the city of Hendersonville, this is the last one, the city of Hendersonville values the lives of all community members and must protect them through collective action. Our goal is to make the lives of all residents better through collective action. We've got to work together. The city recognizes sanctity of each person's life. The city must be open to change priorities and policies as circumstances change in the world around us. What we do is not static. What we do is influenced by outside influences. What we do is the, the beliefs and values of our community will change every time. And so it's important for us to recognize that it takes a collective action. It takes us, our businesses, our citizens to work together to make a great community. So felt like this was a very strong value for our community, for the city council to work with everybody. So those are your draft values and beliefs. We are open for comments, changes, but we've tried to take exactly what you said at your retreat and put those into value statements and then the, the further expl- explaining them, part of the further clarification statements below it so that we knew exactly what the belief and the values of the city council are. So I'll stand by for any questions or discussion regarding that. And again, we're not asking you to approve them today. It's just something we would like to prove as part of the budget. And these are the things. Whether we, we wordsmith the, the values and is, is what we heard. So this is how we built the budget around these values. And I would encourage you as we look at ARP money and other thing, other priorities going forward. If these are reflective of what you believe and value, we would use these to guide us in making decisions as it relates to setting priorities going forward.
All right. Thank you, John. So Adam and I are going to jump in here. I'm going to start with talking about some pay and benefits and then I'm going to turn it over to Adam for the enterprise fund review. Again, please stop us, ask questions, have discussion. I think this is probably my eighth year now, which is surprising, developing a budget for the city and Adam's probably on five or so. So it's, we, we know it in and out and the ability for us to possibly breeze over something that needs more discussion is very likely. So please stop us, dive in, ask questions and we'll go ahead and get started. So starting with salary and benefits, we're going to review kind of that first memo that was sent out and what we heard from the council retreat in February and then our workshop from March, talking about the pay philosophy. So then this is just going to highlight the FY twenty-two budget. So from FY twenty-one, we had a partially self-funded health insurance plan that, that plan is still in place today. The key change here is, is an increase from fifty percent dependent premiums to seventy-five percent dependent coverage. Ultimately, this has a effect on the employee, also paired with a three percent decrease in our policy renewal. So an employee that has family coverage stands to save over $4,000 over the course of the year by moving to the seventy-five percent level. You can see paying three forty-five a month for family coverage where in FY twenty-one, it's seven hundred eleven and fifty dollars. So that is one item that's included in this budget and we'll hit the, the budget impacts as we go through each fund. Looking at our plan, in twenty nineteen, we paid about two point three million dollars in claims. Twenty twenty, also being a, you know, pandemic year, definitely playing a role, but we still, you know, performed very well as an organization. Some of the key indicators will show that's, you know, it's not just the pandemic, but there's other things that we're doing well on. It was about one point three million. So that, that equated to our three percent decrease in our plan premiums. About four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars of those are pharmacy and RX, thirty-seven and a half percent of total claims. That's, that trends with our, our average, three hundred eighty-six thousand or twenty-nine percent of those claims were for inpatient and outpatient procedures. And this number is much improved, this is a much improved number here and I'll explain this. So one, one percent of numbers drove about twenty-two and a half percent of total costs at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So typically that, that one percent, one to two percent is, you know, that, that's a average number. We normally have the majority of our claims are driven by a small portion of our population. But that twenty-two and a half percent of total cost is way down comparatively to what we've seen in, in prior years. And, you know, we'd be happy to talk more about that if we need to further on. Yes, sir.
Industry wide, do you ever compare us to other municipalities or what, but is, how does that number compare to other workforces?
So I don't have the specific plan statistics from other municipalities because I think that's probably proprietary. When we get the information for us, it, it's, you know, it comes in a confidential package for us. So just high level statistics. I don't have many from comparatives, but I can talk to our broker and see.
Asking them just to see how we compare.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more to the benchmark. I've got some information, but it's a little higher level, less granular. So that can give us some insight. But yeah, that twenty-two and a half percent historically has been much higher than that. So we've, we've gotten some high claimants off of the, off of the plan. And then our emergency room visits are favorable. They're fifteen percent below the benchmark of the comparative municipalities. And it's about five visits per year is what we were averaging avoidable ER visits. So we, we track total visits to the ER and we find out which of those were avoidable. And that, that's the number we focus on. We really want our employees to go to urgent care when it makes sense in the ER when they need to. And then we're still providing our wellness programs, our education on health awareness and preventive care. And this isn't for assistance and education for employees with chronic conditions. That's, that's the big piece we want to focus on is chronic conditions like hypertension and hyperlipidemia. So this, this Jerry is kind of where we get our benchmark. This is the Milliman Advanced Risk Adjusters. It's a, it's called MARA. It's a risk factor benchmark that our provider uses to compare us to our standard risk population and it helps determine future. You know, they, they predict future healthcare costs based on this risk factor. So this is a really key model that we look at every single year to see how we're doing. So on the chart, you can see the benchmark is the far right column. The five year, our five year average in the city is the middle column in our twenty twenty calendar plan year is the left column. And it shows a low risk, which is the blue bar, at risk percentage of our population, the orange, chronic in the green and complex in the red. Typically chronic, again, this is your hyperlipidemia, this is your hypertension. This is where you can make an impact on this. Chronic or malignant cancers and things that really we, we don't control. And those actually tend to drive a large portion of the cost. One thing that, that this looks at is typically those in the chronic category are at risk of fall or, yeah, chronic category are at risk of falling into the complex category. Once you get into the hyperlipidemia, hypertension, those, those areas lead to those chronic or those complex conditions that are really our cost drivers. So we really focus on the green bar. The little ratio numbers, the point two nine, point two five, one point five, those in the bars, those are the actual risk factors that are assigned. And that's done through the MARA scale. So the benchmark for low risk right now is point two five. Our, our low risk is point two nine, our five year average is point three one. So we've improved on our five year average, getting closer to the benchmark, but we're not quite there yet. And then you can see on our complex side, we're well below the benchmark for this year. And we're below our five year average, but you can see our five year average, we were getting a lot of high claimants on our plan with complex conditions. At the very bottom, you can see the percentage of the population. So the ratio numbers are kind of a, a risk factor, the percentages are the percent of our total population. So the MARA benchmark for complex conditions is one percent of the population. We're about two percent. Our five year average is three, but really looking at chronic, that, that's, that's what's a little worrisome in our twenty twenty plan year. That number's increased. So our risk factors increased to four point three eight over our five year average of three point seven five. And our percent of the population's grown from nine percent to eleven percent. This is, this is what we focus on. This is what, what worries us about our plan for the future and why we need to really revamp and really start focusing in on our wellness programs and focusing in on diabetes and hypertension, hyperlipidemia and seeing what we can do to help our employees with those, those factors.
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How is the MARA like, are those benchmarks essentially like averages that are collected and then there's, that's how those numbers are compiled or is the, are those numbers that this organization would like to see?
That's what the organization would like to see. So it's not, it's not the collective rule. It's what the organization is saying, hey, you should really be in these ranges to maintain a good, good risk factor and good plan.
But I feel like nationwide, chronic illness is obviously like continually increasing. And so if, you know, you're following a MARA benchmark that is maybe unreasonable to obtain, given the population and the changes that are helping and like happening in people's health. I just think that that's kind of important to think about. And then I don't know, like are, are our providers, especially with like diabetes and hyperlipidemia, so there's some like newer type technology and drugs on the market that they can use that have better effects with those types of cases. Are those options being explored with those patients or do they just, they're just getting kind of the current run of the mill maintenance drugs that they're just continuing to stay on?
No, we, we have a diabetes and RX program that focuses specifically on those chronic conditions and advises employees on how to better select medicines and how to address those issues. So we have a really hands-on program focus at this area. The one big thing we want to do going forward is we're, we're asking the wellness committee to look at revamping our wellness requirements and looking at more of a, a, you know, a different benchmark levels that employees have to meet to get the benefits of the plan. More than just participating and doing your preventive.
Like labs every year, that type of thing.
BMI measurements, things like that. So that, that's probably a year off. We want to get the full wellness committee with our broker to take time to really thoughtfully develop it and then come back next year with a, a plan adjustment for you. And yeah, that, also that, that's a good point on the MARA. You know, that, that's a, that's a goal, right? It's not necessarily what's reflected in the market right now.
You have to have reasonable goals.
Yeah.
And so like, that's just.
Yeah. What we have seen though is, you know, when this chronic creeps up, we do see higher claims as a result following year. So that's something we're going to keep an eye on. Any other questions? Jumping into pay philosophy, what we heard is we want to find different levels of lead our peers, especially local peers here in our pay and benefits. The paying class study is underway and hopefully we'll have implement, implementation of that study by January of twenty twenty-two. We'll have options and reporting and statistics hopefully available this fall for us to start considering. We have money in the budget. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of contingency set aside for the general fund to help with implementation. I think a hundred and fifty in water and sewer. And then lastly, you know, knowing that, that's some time off, we were recommending doing a seven percent cost of living and pay scale adjustment effective July first. So go ahead and take a, we know there's going to be a big bite. So go ahead and take a, a chunk out of this. Get us moving in that direction, help retain employees in the short term, leading into the paying class for January. So the total estimated cost across all funds is six hundred ninety-one thousand dollars for FY twenty-two. For example, you can see a police officer before the change. This is the entry level, completes BLET and is, you know, a full-time, regular employee off probation. Right now is thirty-six thousand nine hundred twelve dollars or sixteen dollars and ninety cents per hour. After the seven percent bump, it'll be thirty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars or eighteen dollars and eight cents an hour. So this is a, an interim step as we see it and would recommend to adopt now on July first to hopefully get us prepared for what might come in January.
And the one, I'm sorry, wait. I just, the one thing I want to add is, is we look at, if you go back to those things that I talked about at the beginning where we were very vulnerable. And I think the council recognized this and heard this and you're hearing this from our employees as you interact with them in, in our community is our pay is lower and compared to our peers and folks in the region, we are losing employees to folks within the region. We're not losing them, not, we're not losing them. We are losing a few folks, the younger folks that may want to go to the Charleston's and the Charlotte's and places. But we're also losing people to organizations that are very close to us in this county, in the neighboring county because they are paying more and the council has heard that. So we have built the budget to meet those.
And I'm glad you guys are doing what we all were in favor of. We don't, I don't want, I know we have to do these studies, but the study we've already done is that we're losing people. And I'm glad we're not going to wait until the study comes in to actually implement the changes that we know we need to make. And I'm glad you budgeted for the difference that's, that's coming there and we can get on it because nobody wants to raise taxes. It's always the thing, but this is one of those cases where if we're going to do all of the things that you went over that we've committed to do, we have to do it. And if we don't take care of employees, there is no way we can deliver the quality of services that we need to. And the employees feel respected and that's, we just got to do it. So I appreciate y'all building that into it and preparing for the change when the study comes in. So I appreciate y'all building that into it and preparing for the change when the study comes in.
I'd just like to add to what Jeff said, which is that we're in a very tight labor market. So, you know, we have a very low unemployment rate. Um, one thing I was going to ask, um, it doesn't relate to the numbers, but I do think is overlooked sometimes. Especially because in my profession, you know, we're paid government employees. And is, uh, to really lay out to people, okay, that's the hourly rate, but it leaves out all the benefits to go with it, which is very valuable in today's market. And I don't know how that's presented to new hires, but I do think that that is something to remind people that it's not just that, it's all the other things that come with it. Um, because I, I, I think, um, I just say young people don't really recognize the value of that. Um, when they're taking that first or second job. And I think making them very aware that, um, you may, that there's in addition to the paycheck really helps make them aware that you're, you're making a lot more money than it actually when you work with benefits in.
So I was going to add to that too, is with the whole benefits equation is that this, or employee retention. You know, essentially getting a four thousand dollar bonus for families who are covering their insurance costs now. Um, you know, and that's not in those numbers there that you look at. So those, I mean, all of those help. And, you know, there are families in this community, people working here who are medically broke because of their insurance premiums and the cost to just get your kids to the doctor. So I'm so happy that we're doing this.
And Jerry, I'll talk to a little bit to what you asked. So we, we do, I, I think heard you go upstairs if you have time after this. Uh, Jennifer Harold's got a great new benefits book that we provide our employees. It's really awesome. Um, and then a, a second piece is, you know, with John's blessing, he's released me and Allison to start working on a, a recruitment and retention marketing effort. Um, I want to kind of take a different approach to the standard government approach to marketing and recruiting positions and, and hopefully we'll have something for you in the next year or so of a, a good approach that, that we can retain and recruit employees highlighting, you know, everything that is, is the benefit of working for a great community like this.
Would you repeat again for me? I believe there's a, an anticipation of what the study's going to show and you've built in some, what was that?
Yeah, we're, we're not sure what, what it's going to come back at, but we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additionally in the general fund and a hundred and fifty in water and sewer just to, you know, when that comes out in January, we'll have a, a pot of money to go ahead and start implementation of portions of it. We have no idea what the, you know, how high it could go, right? Cause part of that is determining where y'all want to land. Part of it is, do you want to be at sixty percent of the market? You know, if the average is fifty, do you want to be ten percent ahead of them? Do you want to be twenty percent ahead of them? How far ahead do you want to be of these comparable peers?
Oh, here's my question with that. Why wouldn't we go ahead and go for it starting in July?
We don't have the numbers.
I know, but I mean, but a little bit more.
To put more for the interim increase? Or are you saying put more in for planning for January?
Now put more in instead of seven percent, maybe go to the next level. Well, I think we all know it's going to come up higher than seven percent.
Yeah.
I think we know that.
We, I mean, we can talk and if that's the correction, we can.
Cause it's already been, you've already got it in the budget.
Yes. You're saying taking what we've incorporated.
I don't, I'm not saying take it all, but go ahead.
Like start at eight percent or something like.
Yeah. So we can start in July with a little bit more, because we know it's going to come out more than seven percent. You just know it. And I love the fact that you're building it in there for that, but I really don't want to wait on somebody to tell us, yeah, you were right. I don't see the complication there of, of taking a portion of that and, and giving it to the employees now instead of waiting several more months. Something to think about.
Just sound clear, Jeff. You're saying we think the pay classification study is going to indicate these are necessary anyway.
I think it's going to, from what you're seeing, from what I'm seeing.
No, no, I, I get it though. You're saying just that it's almost like the preemptive strike.
Yeah. Plus the fact, if we wait till, when will this come in? January?
Probably January. It'll be next year's.
But how long that they've missed that? The raise. And it's in the budget, right?
Yeah. Yeah. If, if council feels good about that, we can do that.
So, so the pay anticipated pay schedule increase coming into January report, that is in the budget?
We put just a lump sum to, so we can go ahead and start attacking it, right?
So what Jeff was saying, instead of just holding that money out, go ahead and drop it in and spread that out through the organization. It's already budget, it's in this budget, but instead of holding it back, go ahead and allocate it out.
Yeah, I agree. What they are going to be getting later.
Yeah. Okay.
So then should you discuss those numbers as far as like, you know, how high you're, you want to start? At eight and a half or nine percent? And then if you need to bump up an extra percent or something like that, a later date, then you would do that, but you would go higher now, obviously.
Yeah, right. And we'll, we'll see what that equates to and see what that percentage we can build, that's already built in. We can go ahead and drop that in to the system, see how much more we can get. And then just the one caveat is, you know, when, when January comes and the pay study says, here we are. We don't, we got to go back to the well. You know, we got to do a budget and then at that point, we don't have any budget for it. So.
But I think we'll be okay.
But at that rate, it's almost like a hundred thousand per percentage. Is that?
Yeah.
And you already have?
Three hundred or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Explain that last comment about in January, when the study comes in, we go back to the well.
They didn't count on putting that in there until January.
No, I get it. Right. So what you meant was the six months that we're talking about paying for now is budgeted, but the other six months is not budgeted.
Well, if we want to, if we.
At a higher level.
Right. We budgeted six months. We had budgeted twelve months.
Yeah. The, the study comes back and says, you know, you still need another whatever, ten percent to get to where you want to be. We then have to figure out mid-year how we, how we want to start implementing that, or you have to wait till July first of the next budget when you do a tax adjustment.
That's the going back to the well part. Okay.
Right. Okay.
Think we need, we need to go for it.
Yeah.
God, we just lost too many good, really good people.
I mean, it doesn't make any sense to wait if we know we have to do.
We're the training ground for everyone right now. Just pardon me? Yeah.
Loud and clear. And the last benefit you, we've heard talked about is paid family leave. It's not included in the proposed budget. And I'll show you a summary slide of all these benefits and the, the cost impacts. We researched three options, a six week and eight week and a twelve week paid family leave. This assumes that we'd replace that labor at a seventy percent rate. So there are some positions that you're not necessarily going to have to hire overtime or part-time to bring someone in to fill that role. But we were saying about seventy percent of the position we would need to, to replace that labor with. And then on average, we have about two hundred and four weeks associated with some sort of family leave per year, based on all of our employees. So with all that information, there's a great, um, Department of Labor calculator out there to determine kind of the, the costs and the savings uh, that you get from a plan like this. The key things are, are the weeks of leave and then the percent of the employees you retain, right? So the more employees you retain, the more cost savings you get on going back out to hire those sunk costs in hiring and training new employees. So I've shown three levels of each, six, eight and twelve weeks across the top. Hundred percent of employees retained, eighty percent of employees retained and sixty percent of employees retained who take these two hundred and four weeks of leave. And that in there is the cost. So six weeks of leave at a hundred percent retention would cost the city about fifty-eight thousand dollars in part-time and overtime costs. All the way up to twelve weeks of leave with retaining only sixty percent of employees, three hundred and forty thousand dollars of costs. So we'd have to build into our part-time and overtime budgets for the next fiscal year. Yes, sir.
I'll, I apologize. I don't follow the retention percentage there. What exactly does that mean?
So the employees who take the leave, those who come back and stay with the city because they had that benefit.
So that's a prediction of what they think would be as far as a benefit and who would stay because they have the benefit.
Right. The calculator recommends sixty percent as an average. Yeah. But I wanted to show some other higher levels. If this benefit does end up working out, we retain more of these employees.
So then these dollar amounts would be how much it costs to hire a new employee versus how much we're paying to cover their salary.
Right. Right. This is the cost of the benefit versus the potential savings of retaining the employees.
And then these numbers are all for covering a hundred percent of their salary while they're out.
Correct.
And did you factor in the short-term?
So our short-term is only a voluntary.
Aha. So that would only cover some of you.
Right.
Okay. Well.
Wow. Employees do not automatically have short-term disability.
No. So any questions on, I'm going to, I'm going to switch to the next slide that summarizes all of this. And we really do want to seek guidance because we, we have our proposal. We've heard a couple of things that will modify, but any questions here on this cost at all?
How many people, how many employees are affected each year by this? Compared to how many employees we have?
Seventeen employees equals that two hundred and four weeks out of about two seventy-five to three hundred employees.
Was that the answer seventeen?
Seventeen.
And the, the cost to, for an employee to purchase short-term disability is actually very small, right? It's like seven or eight dollars.
Yeah.
Per paycheck or something like that.
If we were to offer it for all employees, it'd be twelve dollars per employee per month.
I think we should consider doing that.
And what would that cost? And what's the, what is the benefit?
Because if you have a short-term disability policy, then in my opinion, we don't need something like this. Um, because then they have the policy to use for pregnancy for.
But that only covers sixty percent.
Major medical issues.
I don't think short-term disability covers you caring for someone else, does it? It only, it only covers if you get hurt. It doesn't cover me taking care of my mom.
I think some of them do.
Well, I know ours is not. So the one we have only covers me.
Yeah, it would only be if you were out.
That's the one we have. It only covers us.
The, it's about forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars a year on our health plan.
Do you have any data on, um, what the percentage of people is who uses short-term or who uses paid medical leave and then, um, leaves the job?
I don't.
Like national averages?
The, the average we received is about sixty percent of employees are retained through a program like this. So I guess that would mean forty percent leave.
So they write out the end of their.
Their.
And then they don't come back.
They don't come back.
Forty percent. Okay.
Of the ones that try, uh, attempted, that need to use it.
Right.
Well, I think.
So of the seventeen, I think sixty percent retention is like ten.
Those enough.
Yeah. Yeah, ten.
Um, I mean, for me, I think the importance of this is that we've been talking about how important benefits are to the salary package we've presented to someone. And as a young family, this is very attractive to me because like when I had Cole, I had six weeks. Two weeks were two of my vacation weeks and then for an entire month, I wasn't paid. And so I had to go back to work before my body had even healed. So this gives them an opportunity to not have to worry about that. Their bills are paid. They can bond with their babies or take care of their spouse or their mom and not have that extra stress, which would also help with, you know, stress leads to hypertension and all of these other chronic illnesses that we're talking about. So it's, it completes that package that we have.
Well, I, I agree with you, Jennifer, that it does make sense to buy short-term disability.
Yeah.
But I do think this covers another step, which is if I have to care for a family member that short-term disability would not cover. To me, I think that's an advantage of this one, but I understand you are correct mathematically, this would make more sense for the employee for us to have short-term disability. That's basically what this is.
Well, so and if we covered short-term disability for everybody, that would lower the cost of this. Because now instead of paying a hundred percent of their salary, for some of them, we're just covering that forty percent.
But yeah, but what I don't know, and I'm not an insurance person, is with regard to short-term disability, how those, how the, the procedure goes versus using this plan here as far as filing your claim and getting your money and all that kind of stuff. I, I don't know the, the particulars of how that goes. I, I will say this, um, I talked to John about this. I do think that by providing the family leave, we did state in our values that we won't get political, but we can talk about agendas. Um, and that is, I think, um, it provides what often is perceived as um, a woman's responsibility to take care of family members. This provides men with a benefit that says, hey, you're going to be able to stay out of the house, stay out of work for four weeks while your mom is recovering from chemotherapy and you're still going to get paid. And it doesn't necessarily have to be reliant, uh, a, 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 a man is going to give, get paid for his work and be able to take the same responsibility that is often put upon women in taking care of families. So that's one of the reasons that I like it is there can't be excuses. Well, I gotta go to work because, you know, we don't have any money in the house and things like that. And there's been a lot of discussions in the pandemic about how women have had to quit work to stay at home. And I don't disagree with any family member having to do that, but this benefit is, applies to all employees, which would give, um, you know, men as well, the opportunity to do that, at least for six weeks and still have an income.
Yeah. The other thing about this program too, is that it does go even further into equity. So for people who maybe it's only a single income household, they're not having to rush back to work after somebody's been sick. You know, like I said earlier, they just had a baby, as opposed to like someone, if they are a dual income household, they don't have to worry about not getting, you know, they may not have to worry as much. Um, so this falls right in line with a lot of the values that we laid out.
Help me with understanding, we have options of six, eight and twelve. That's what you're showing, right? Uh, I know you're, you're, you're going for twelve.
So twelve is an effective policy, but I do understand that we are adding a lot this year as far as benefits.
Yeah.
So at least six.
And that's, that's what I wanted to know is what would the cost be for us to put the six in the, into the budget? That's, I don't think you had it in the budget.
It's not in the budget. At the average retention rate of sixty percent, it's a hundred and four thousand dollars. This is one of those.
That's what that number is.
You don't know how to budget for this. You have to put a, a large guess in. And then as the year, as it happens, you put it in contingency and as, as it's taken, you then put it in the correct department to fill in for that overtime and part-time cost. Um, so a hundred and four thousand at six weeks at the average. And you can see it drops off to about fifty-eight thousand if we retain a hundred percent of those employees. So it's also, yeah, and part of us.
I know it's.
Selling our organization.
Number to put in a line item, but.
And so.
I think we have to, I really want to put more money in employees' pockets right now. I love the idea that we're covering seventy-five percent of this, uh, the family numbers on insurance. Um, doing something like this, if we can work it in, it's fine, but I do want us to focus on the things we got there first and maybe begin this at the six or something. And, but, and, and look at it that way rather than just jumping right into it. Cause this, you said seventeen people maybe used it. Now granted, if it's a, a much broader offer, there'll be more people take advantage of it, but I would like if we do this, start at the six.
Mm-hmm. Are there caps on how often they can use it?
There are. We'd have to, so initiating this and saying, yes, go forward and develop this isn't going to take policy development. And there's a lot of intricacies to that. So you can say, yes, it goes into the budget. We have the money for it. But then HRs, we'll start spending and then we come back to you with the policy with all the detail of how it is actually applied.
And typically they have to qual, they have to qualify for FMLA in order to qualify for this program.
Yeah, but there are people that qualify for FMLA a lot.
Yeah, but on average, we have seventeen people a year.
That would apply for this.
I'd look at too incorporating the, uh,
Short-term.
Short-term disability.
Into it, which I think, as you said, would reduce.
That does make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And you try to put them together. It may not be, we can get it in time to do this budget, get it in there, but maybe you can. I don't want to get it in there and then come back and, because I've watched as employees have these. because I've watched as employees have these issues, employees step up and give time to them. We've watched how they come together and we've watched how the city has actually helped them. Uh, if we're going to do it, I want to do it right without it just I'm just throwing something at a dartboard and get it. But I do see there's a place for it. I would like to for sure look at doing the short-term disability for employees.
And one thing to keep in mind is, I don't know if Jennifer is on the call or not, but we have to tell our, you know, our broker what our plan needs to be. And that we, that, that boat might have sailed already.
But saying.
But next, we can put it in next year, certainly. But we'll, if we can get it in this year, it's something, so let's, let's kind of shift gears. Let's, let's look at the whole thing. So. So in summary, kind of this was the recommendation and then we'll summarize kind of what we're hearing, right? So the recommendation was seventy-five percent. Dependent health insurance coverage, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars across all funds. A seven percent COLA and pay scale adjustment, which is six hundred and ninety-one thousand. And paying class implementation at mid-year, three hundred thousand dollars across all funds. We recommended paid family leave for a future year based on the cost that we were stomaching in F Y twenty-two. In total, one point one million dollars investment in new salaries and benefits. So so the question really comes down to it. We've heard, you know, take the three hundred thousand, put it into July first. That's loud and clear. So direction on, you know, do we start building in a six-week policy and see if we can get short-term disability? Or where, where do you all want to see this land?
So if we add short-term disability in six weeks, let's just say the sixty percent wait, that would put us at what, one point?
One, one, one hundred and fifty thousand. It's about forty-three. Yes, one point two five total.
Uh, I have a question. Uh, I know Brian Polly and I know you have numbers up there. But I know in the back of your head, like on those budget numbers you give us, you've got best, worst and all that. So my guess is that there, the number you're giving us, you have another number of worst-case scenario. If all of a sudden, a lot of people started using that, this benefit for, um, the paid family leave.
I feel, I feel pretty good actually about the seventeen because that's, that's our, that's average leave. So, you know, it's not like people then you know, these are, these are life events, right? It's not like you're just, oh, I've got a new benefit at work. This, I'm doing, do this life event now. It's I think life events just kind of happen organically. So I, I'm pretty comfortable that seventeen is a, a fair number.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to spike to like thirty.
Unless we have a really big winter storm.
Right. Or something, or a pandemic. I don't know.
Oh, don't talk like that. Okay. So you're hat, then you, the sixty percent number you're cop, very co, fairly confident in?
Yes.
Okay.
So then the sixty percent number would be the worst.
That's worst case. Correct.
Okay.
But you're not sure you can even get it put together.
For short-term disability, not sure we can implement for July one. A paid family leave plan, we can budget for it and then come back to you with a policy for adoption. It sixty days to.
Like it may again.
Work through that. Short-term disability, because that's part of our health plan and that's already been submitted to our. They gotta do all the underwrite, they gotta do all the underwriting and all that.
Yeah, but we're paying them. So find another broker who will let us do it. Well, that's, you're paying the money.
I read that.
Why would you turn somebody down who's going to pay you money? Lots of money.
That's true.
No, no, no. I don't, I don't want your hundred and fifty thousand this year. No. I don't think they're going to say that if you call them.
That also affects the employees who are signing up for coverage.
It's okay. But you're, but you're saying that we, we're just gonna, we're just gonna do short-term disability, not they're going to sign up like not that they, everybody is on it, right?
Yeah.
They don't choose to not be on it. Everybody gets it.
An added benefit.
Right. Correct. But that, you know, we have to change.
Which means that the city is writing someone a check.
Right.
And is Jennifer here? Can she tell us this question?
Yeah, Jennifer. Let's see.
Definitely.
Jennifer.
There you are, Jennifer.
Yeah.
What I mess up?
You did great. You did really great. Um, we may be able to get short-term disability. I can talk to him and see if we can get that added.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're good.
Call them and let us know. We'll be here like. Yeah, we're here. Go ahead and get one more.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Found a friend.
All good.
You can put us on speaker if you'd like.
Okay.
Our, our chief negotiator's here.
I was gonna say, if you go to college, figure out all those scales. So it's just a matter of punching in the hundreds to figure out what the cost would be.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you.
That sounds like we can, we can work it in. So short-term disability.
Six weeks.
Paying classes going into July one, the money that we have for that. And is it can collective six weeks?
Yes.
With some sort of policy.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, then help me out here. We're doing.
Yes.
Six weeks. Are we still going to try to do everybody on the short-term disability? So they marry up, we're going to check and see. But if that's a no, we still want to go with six.
Six weeks.
And the short-term sounds, probably yes. Jennifer feels confident. We'll get it. We'll get it through. Six weeks. Paid family leave, short-term disability. Money for paying class starting July first.
I have an application from the city of.
I was about to say.
That's what we want.
I had to have a pack and play at my office when my kids were babies because I didn't have leave either. And you know, when you are self-employed and you don't work, you actually don't get paid anything. So.
LeBron, looking for, I'm sorry, Steve.
Yes.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Um, Brian, looking forward to January then. In other words, we need to be prepared in January. We've got to come with, with, come up with three hundred thousand more dollars. That's right.
Yes.
It could be more. Depending on, it's, that's all, uh, you don't know the answer right now.
But that just, we'll say that with what we're deciding today, at least three hundred thousand dollars.
Sure.
Come January. Okay. Well, I'm just saying that we need to know that that's what we're deciding here.
Yes. All right. That is it for salaries and benefits. This affects all the other information you're going to see throughout the day. And so Adam, you, I've only given you thirty minutes now, but I think you're good. We got thirty minutes till we break.
We'll, we'll get the enterprise funds in time crunch. So knowing that we only have thirty minutes, I'll, I'll keep it higher level and just be prepared to answer any questions you all may have. So the, the first, uh, the first fund we're going to start off with is the Stormwater Fund. And you all have heard multiple presentations throughout the year from, uh, Mike Huffman on this fund. So this first slide is just looking at our prior year estimate. So what Brian and I predicted the year would end at, uh, compared to the actuals that were recorded in the audit. So.
But you do one thing, will you say why we have a Stormwater Fund? Cause for people that are listening, I don't want them to think it's something John Kana came up with, Brian came up with, why we've had to do this, just briefly.
Sure. So, uh, Stormwater Fund is, uh, pretty much a requirement from the state. Um, our program was mandated, um, by the state. So we're, we're in a phase two community. And it requires us to do certain work on infrastructure, uh, education and other items. So, um, right now, our program administrator, Mike Huffman, is in charge of uh, doing various educational outreach items, capital projects. And you know, in addition to those things, we're also uh, helping people with their, uh, right-of-way related stormwater issues, um, on a case-to-case scenario and, um.
And it was a completely unfunded mandate.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So.
We have to fund.
Yeah, state or local governments have to raise their own revenue to, to fund their, their stormwater.
Or we start getting serious fines. And.
We are under audit right now.
We have our audit will be the nineteenth and the twentieth, a two-day audit this month. And if not, we'll get a notice of violation. So, yes.
Sir. So, uh, just, just looking at the financials of that, that stormwater program, you can see our, um, our estimate and our actual were fairly tight. Um, on the, on the dollar side, um, we were, uh, within fifty thousand dollars, um, on our, from our estimates, our actual. Uh, so the, the difference there, the bottom line in our revenues and Stormwater Fund was, uh, three twenty-six, uh, thousand dollars for our estimate. And the audit showed that we collected three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, on the expenditure side, we were much tighter. So, um, there was only an eight thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollar difference between our estimate and our actuals. Um, so very, very, uh, tight budgeting there. Um, and, and ultimately we ended the year, if you look at the actual column near the bottom, um, our beginning fund balance was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We ended the year with two hundred and four thousand dollars, uh, in fund balance. So we added back, um, seven hundred, or seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to the fund balance. So, uh, Brian, next slide. Uh, this next slide is, uh, looking at, um, the next year budget. So, um, what we started with in requests and um, what we discussed with the departments through the development of the next year budget, um, what was taken out, what was put in. Uh, you can see that our revenues remain the same and that's because we got our, uh, recommendation from our rate consultants, our master planning and, uh, bunch of input from Mike Huffman. So I'm pretty confident with that one point two million dollar figure, um, with the new rates being implemented going into the new year. Uh, we actually adjusted out, um, about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from, uh, the requests in the Stormwater Funds. The personnel and benefits line, that expenditure increased. So that was uh, mostly due to the addition of a new, uh, full-time position in the Stormwater Fund. The Stormwater, I think technician is the appropriate term. Um, they will be helping Mike administer that phase two or, uh, yeah, that phase two permit that, that were required follow by the state government. Um, we adjusted out some, some items from the operating budget and also the capital budget, um, just trying to keep our expenditures in line with, with our revenues. So ultimately, uh, through the budget development process, we're, um, we, we were appropriating, um, we were appropriating four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in fund balance. So, uh, we reduced that and now we're expected to only appropriate, uh, thirteen thousand, three hundred. So. Uh, Brian, next slide. And just, just looking at how that stacks up against last year's revised, excuse me, this year's revised budget, the twenty-twenty-one revised budget. Um, we have increased our revenues by six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So again, that's that rate increase that you all have been informed of. Um, we're also on, on the expenditure side increasing. Um, just to, just to execute more capital projects. You can see that um, there's a lot of personnel, capital and operating cost increases. Um, as well as a little bit for debt service, um, for some, for some needed equipment. And next slide. So, uh, not to spend too much time on the revenues again, but, um, you can see that um, in the current year, we, we've got a five dollar per month flat fee for all of our customers. Um, we completed some rate studies and master planning and have a recommendation that uh, council adopts with the fee schedule, uh, in the coming budget. A five dollar a month flat fee for single-family residence, residential properties. And then a five dollar a month E R U fee for non-residential properties with either a maximum payment of two fifty a month or a fifty percent credit for properties that have stormwater control measures. And we do plan, um, I think it's the direction of the council to have a two-year resolution, uh, to adhere to that cap for credit program. And again, just hitting the highlights of the stormwater expenditures for next year. Uh, the budget includes a seven percent COLA and the seventy-five percent dependent coverage. Um, we added some cost allocation splits uh, for some ground crews who do stormwater-related work for us and also a new stormwater technician. Um, in the operating budget, we have a hundred thousand dollars for uh, a phase two asset inventory by W R Martin, the folks that um, are studying our current, uh, Wash Creek Master Plan area and also doing our rate study. Um, we have some, some money in there for line surveys and invasive species control. And also, um, just a hundred and thirty-four thousand in general operating expenditures. Um, on the capital side, you can see all the projects listed out, uh, the major being two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for uh, projects that we identified through our master planning.
And let me just like, uh, put a fine point on that, you know, the, a large chunk of the money is going to infrastructure projects of the area that was identified. You know, where we had failing infrastructure as part of our study. So that two hundred and seventy thousand dollars really, um, uh, goes toward, um, West Hendersonville. And also I'll, I'll point out the stream restoration project in Sullivan Park, which is, uh, I know something that we've heard about at, um, all of our community meetings the last couple of years. So we'll go in there and clean out those invasive species and do that stream restoration through the park. Um, I know is, is also a priority of, of the council in the, in that neighborhood, in the community. So.
Right. And if there are no questions on the Stormwater Fund, uh, can go into the Environmental Service Fund, how we uh, deal with our solid waste and recycling. So, um, same, same methodology as the Stormwater Fund, just first looking at the, the last year estimate compared to our audit. Uh, this fund was even tighter. So, um, we estimated, uh, one point two million dollars. I should say one hun, one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, uh, of revenue and ended up with one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that difference was only, uh, three percent. So forty thousand dollar difference there, collected a little more than we anticipated. Um, on the expenditure side, we, uh, spent, uh, slightly less than we uh, originally estimated that we would spend. So we, our, our original estimate was, uh, one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of expenditures and we ended with one million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, a lot of that difference was personnel. There was, uh, you know, a COVID-related hiring freeze. So some of that effect is uh, shown there in the personnel expense. Um, and also on the capital side, we, uh, decided to delay some capital purchases. Um, ultimately, uh, at the end of fiscal year nineteen twenty, we had a beginning fund balance of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. And we used, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars. So we ended at a hundred and seventy thousand, one seventy-seven. All right. Next slide, please, Brian.
Sir.
So, uh, just again, looking at the, the budget development process, um, we, we came to you in February uh, at our first budget meeting to discuss, um, some of the concerns we were having with the use of fund balance in the Environmental Service Fund and, um, discussed a, a potential rate recommendation. And, uh, chose to go ahead and, and drop that into our budget estimate. So this budget includes a a rate increase and we're, we're pretty confident based on our accounts, um, and rate structure that we will receive in revenue in this fund of one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So no change there. Um, on the expenditure side, we did adjust out, uh, some capital and, uh, some operating expenses just to tighten things up as we continue to, uh, do some planning route studies, uh, other items to make the operation a little more efficient, get a better understanding of what our customers need and how to efficiently operate that fund. Next slide, please, Brian. Uh, looking at how that stacks up to the current year, the current year revised budget. Um, we're increasing revenues by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So a seventeen point two percent increase. And we are increasing our expenditures by four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, a lot of that, a major portion, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, is for us to take out a loan for a, a portion of a brush truck that will also be split with the Stormwater Funds. And a new sanitation truck, which is estimated at about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And right now, uh, at the end of the year, we're estimating that we will add money back into fund balance, which is, uh, a much-needed change uh, for the fund. So, uh, again, just a summary of our environmental service fees, which are the primary driver of revenues. Um, you know, we earn that based on our monthly costs for, uh, servicing the bins, picking up waste. And we're, we're changing some of that rate recommendation to steer the, uh, aircraft carrier away from the use of fund balance, uh, into a more sustainable financial. from the use of fund balance into a more sustainable financial practice. So the recommendation right now is to change the residential 32 gallon waste and recycling fee to $20 per month, which is an increase of 375 per month. And that just raises the rate for customers who participate recycling to the same rate as those who do not. And then on the same kind of methodology for the 96 gallon waste and recycling fees, those will be going up to $22, which is an increase of $3.50 per month.
Wait, I feel like I'm kind of confused.
Yep.
So it raises the rate for the customers who participate in recycling to the same rate?
Yes. So right now we charge slightly less for customers who participate in recycling program. And that was established probably in the early 2000s, if I remember back on our, on our older budgets.
Remind me again what the incentive is to participate in recycling, other than just out of the goodness of your heart?
Yeah, it's a, it's a lower cost to, to have a, if you have a recycling bin, it's a lower monthly cost.
Currently, but going forward, there will be, we're removing that incentive. There will be no incentive.
So this would equalize the rates.
Everybody's cool with that?
I, I think when we first started this, especially when we rolled out the big blue cans, the goal was to get people to participate. But I think, well, I don't know, this is, I'm not sure people really notice the difference on their bill. They recycle, I mean, quite honestly, out of the goodness of their heart because they want to recycle.
I certainly don't think difference is what gets them to recycle.
I, I don't think, I'm not even sure people know that there's a difference.
It's not a big incentive, is it?
Well, no.
It's, it's, it's not a big cost incentive. I, I think most people, you're probably right, Jerry, are probably recycling because it's what society is leaning towards, is participating in recycling programs. You know, this is just equalizing those rates to make sure we can continue that program and have financial sustainability to make sure that we get the people there to pick up the waste on time.
But I, I agree with you that we want to have an incentive for people to do it. But I'm not sure that our people are doing it because of that financial incentive, which I think boils down to $25 a year. Isn't it like a $2 benefit each month?
Yes, sir.
I guess I would think there would not so much as be an incentive to recycle, but a disincentive to not recycle.
Right. I guess you never know till you put it in place and see what happens. But I, I just find it hard to believe people are not going to fill up their recycle bins by doing this.
And, and I think the default right now is most people who sign up on the residential service get, get a blue bin in addition to their, their waste bin as well. So most of our customers are on that waste and recycling side of the, the fee schedule. So they're already signed up for that service.
And a couple of things to think about, one about recycling, two about, you know, the, the vulnerability of this fund of making sure it's financially sustainable. I'll talk about recycling, recycle, it'll be interesting to see where the recycling market goes in the future. There's been some even communities in North Carolina that have gotten out of the curbside recycling because it's, there, there's not a market, right? So it's the right thing to do and it's gotten so, this has not hit us yet and hopefully it won't. But there's some communities where the, the cost to recycle has gotten so great, they can't afford to do it. And I don't think we want to go there, but it's something we're watching very closely. Second thing is, is, and again, going back to the vulnerability to a chicken and the egg. The sun, this fund really needs to be financially sustainable because it will be directly impacted by those 1,000 houses, those 1,000 residential units that we've approved. Because those are 1,000 more blue cans and 1,000 more green cans that we, we need to be planning for. And 1,000 more trips by the, the brush truck that we, we need to make sure we are sustainable and being to provide that service when those things come online in the next couple of years. So just draw your attention to that as in what we're trying to, to plan for the future and do the route studies and make sure we're sustainable so we can provide that service.
And a, a large driver of that rate change also, as John alluded to, is just the, you know, ta- talking about the chicken and the egg, we're, we're expecting to have a lot of development. These are just a few examples of the, the major developments that we've got coming to the city that were provided to us by the planning department. So you can see what our current number of customers within each category are on the chart below. So i- if you look at the residential bins, you'll notice that most of our customers, the, the largest portion are already on that 96 gallon waste and recycling. And the next largest portion are on the 32 gallon waste and recycling bin. So.
96 gallons is 22 bucks right now. And 32, which is a third, is that is 20? Is that right?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So you pay $2 to get three times a pot.
Yes, right now, yes, sir. Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah. Getting a good deal here, you're, you're not requiring.
The truck's got to stop.
Yeah.
That's the challenge, whether or not how big, big or small it is.
It's just fine, you know, it's three times the size of the pot.
Yeah, well, the.
Tipping fees, because it takes the same amount, basically the same amount of manpower to pick up the small ones.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah. Body.
That's right. And the, the tipping fees pay a, play a huge part in the expenditures for the fund. So we budgeted for the next year about $220,000 in tipping fees. So there's a lot of risk with the tipping fees too, as landfills, you know, continue to, to fill up and refuse recycling that, that kind of thing. So.
I think it's a good deal. I've seen some of the private haulers where it costs us. It's a real good, it's a good service.
Great. So again, just adjusting the rates to meet our short-term needs while we can, you know, get some route and efficiency studies done and hopefully in later years, get a, get some sort of either master planning or rate study by an outside firm to, to guide us along the way in the, in the long run. So as I mentioned, you know, personnel is going up to $898,000. 7% COLA is included in there as well as the dependent coverage. We also have some cost allocation changes for the environmental service fund, based on the work they do, cleaning up after events, things like that in the Main Street area. The operating budget includes that $220,000 tipping fee, which is 42% of our total operating budget in the ESF. We also included a route analysis, our usual budget for brush and leaf grinding, as well as our standard tree removal contract. And on the capital side, you can see the two pieces of equipment I mentioned earlier. And getting into the, the biggest enterprise fund, if there are no questions with the ESF, we've got the water sewer fund.
Adam, do you want to take a pause, a quick break for everybody?
Yes.
Yep. Y'all need a break and then we can come back and dive in. So let's, let's break 10 minutes and we'll come right back.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. So jumping into the water sewer fund, welcome back everybody online. We were comparing again, the, Brian and I's estimate to the actuals that came in last fiscal year. So water sewer fund was, was pretty tight. You'll notice the dollar amounts are increasing, but our percentages are still pretty good. So on the revenue side, we estimated $16.9 million of revenue. Actually collected 16.3, almost 16.4 million dollars. So $601,000 difference there, mostly due to our charges for service. This is probably a COVID-related impact. So talking to some other budget analysts, other utilities across the state, they're, they're seeing similar trends just with industries closing or reducing their capacity to sustain through the pandemic. There was some, some revenue change there. On the expenditure side, we estimated that we would end the year at $15.7 million. And this was based on an older trend that, you know, the fund would spend about 90% of its budgeted expenditures. But Mr. Connet asked that, that the utility began spending a little more. So we amped that up and managed to end the year spending $17.1 million. So you'll notice a $1.4 million difference in our estimate to our actual on the expenditure side, so 9%. We estimated that we would end the year with a $9.8 million fund balance. Started the year at 8.8, so adding almost $1 million exactly. But to end the year, we actually appropriated fund balance. We spent some of that down for, for capital projects and some, some master planning efforts. So we, we ended the year with actual fund balance of $8.1 million. Looking at the budget development process for the upcoming fiscal year 22, we started with an initial revenue estimate, not changing the rates of $17.4 million. But we noticed a, a large request for capital, analyzed our debt, tried to get an understanding of how those major capital projects are, are driving our costs and our rates. So today, we're, we're going to present to you a rate increase recommendation, which will generate us $2.5 million of revenue in, in addition to, you know, what we originally requested. So we're recommending that we budget almost exactly $20 million worth of revenue for FY22. Our expenditure side, we, we brought down $3.7 million worth of expenditures that were included. Our expenditure side, we, we brought down three point seven million dollars worth of expenditures that were included in the budget. You'll notice that the capital line particularly decreased seventy-one percent from the department request level to the manager recommended level. So, again, just there were a lot of capital requests that we feel, we felt like could be prioritized, maybe waited on and held until we could, you know, get some of the major capital projects completed. We anticipated an original fund balance appropriated of six point four million dollars and managed to get that down to only one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So, there was a ninety-seven percent difference in our fund balance appropriation between our requested budget and our manager recommended budget. Brian, next slide, please. So, stacking all of that up to this year, our revised budget for the current years on the revenue side, sitting at seventeen point three million dollars, again, adding two point six million, so a fifteen point three percent change to the higher amount there. Our current year revised budget expenditures are at eight point four million dollars and we're recommending the increase to twenty million dollars, one point seven million dollar increase. Again, mostly for capital, but also for some, for some operating items to, to contract out some projects, to do some planning, got a, a pretty good increase, a sixteen point seven percent increase in our debt service. And we'll talk about that as we go forward into the next slides. But first, talking about the revenues, our, our charges for service are our major revenue source for the Water Sewer Funds. Those are, you know, your, your user fees for what's actually showing up to your door and, you know, going through the tap or on the, on the wastewater side going out. So, that's ninety-six point one percent of our total revenue for the Water Sewer Funds. And, and really on the charges for service side, that's where we can make a big impact on our, on our bond covenant. That charges for service line includes the rate differential that we've established each year. And we're also going to give you a summary of those rates. So, Brian, next slide, please. The rates are driven around the philosophy that we established back, I think, in twenty seventeen through a rate study that we did with Raftellus. So, projects are the primary driver of our rates. We need to maintain those rates to meet our financial needs, especially now that we have a revenue bond. So, that's a new sense. We, we did this rate study, but still equally important. We do have a dashboard available to analyze the impacts of our rates. And over on the, the right-hand side of that sheet, you can see what our philosophy is. So, any, our, our base charges, generally speaking, fund our fixed administrative and personnel costs and fifteen percent of our debt service. So, any, any costs that we're going to have regardless of whether or not that water or wastewater service is connected to your house. So, that's, that's what that base charge covers. And the volumetric charge covers any other personnel costs, so mostly operating folks. Operation and maintenance costs on the infrastructure. The other eighty-five percent of our total debt service are pay-go and reserve needs and any miscellaneous or minus any of our miscellaneous revenue offsets. Brian, next slide. So, getting down into, you know, why, why we're recommending a rate increase, what's driving that? We covered this bond issuance narrative and covenant narrative in, in the February meeting. So, the, the summary of this slide is, you know, when we take our fund balance into account, we're doing very well on our, on our bond covenant requirement. And our operating revenues were right at the requirement, right at one point oh. So, we just need to raise those to make sure we're meeting the second requirement of our bond covenant. And again, just the, the projects that we've got planned up through fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six are driving a lot of that cost. Printed off, I think most of you are finding a Gantt chart at your seat. So, I'm not going to go through each and every one of these projects, but there is a total project cost of about a hundred and ten point eight million dollars in the next five fiscal years. So, a, a number of those are going to be reserved funded, funded through fund balance or other savings. We have a few projects that were awarded SRF funding thanks to grant applications by our operating department. Brent, Adam Lee have done a great job at applying for those SRF loans. We've got right now the Etowah Water Improvement Project, which is funded by a twenty twenty revenue bond, our first revenue bond issuance, as well as some AMI refunding. And where Brian and I are, are planning on an additional couple revenue bond issuances, one for twenty twenty-two for the Clear Creek Interceptor Project and the Church Street Improvement Project. And then in later years, twenty twenty-three revenue bond project for the expansion of our water treatment plant, the North Fork Reservoir, White, North Fork Reservoir dredging, excuse me, the bio solids handling and disposal dryer, the UV disinfection system and an EQ basin. So, are, are there any capital projects on this list that, that you all would like to discuss or maybe want more information about?
And, and Adam, I draw attention to, you know, the, the big one on here, which is we expect to, we have bid it once and our rebidding at this fall was the French River, French Broad River intake, which I know is important to the council and the community as a whole, the county as a whole, as we expand our ability to be more drought tolerant for our waters, our, our primary water source, moving off the Norse Mills River onto the French Broad, which is, has more water capacity. So, again, we bid it one time, we bids came in very high, so we're value engineering that intake, but still have an estimate of about seventeen million dollars. And we expect construction to start sometime in, in twenty twenty-two. So, but it's a project we've been talking about for about ten years.
John, I'd also like to add, you know, highlight the two sewer interceptor projects with Mud Creek and Clear Creek. Those were identified in our wastewater collection system master plan. And the one big unknown at this point that could change a scant chart significantly is the results of our wastewater treatment plant, master plan. That plan is almost complete. And once that plan comes in, we're going to have a whole lot of, of understanding of what we need to do from an equipment and capacity standpoint at the plant and potential equalization basins and, and things like that. So, tho- those could jump around pending the results of this wastewater plan, which we should have back fairly shortly, the next ninety days.
And just noting, uh, general market trends, you know, we're, we're pretty confident in these project costs, I think, as we sit. But, you know, we're always reevaluating, you know, our, our project estimates. The construction market's been pretty expensive here lately. So, depending on how that changes in the future years, you may see some cost increases. There, there have been a few projects that have had some cost increases related to materials and the cost of contracting major capital project work out. So, Brian, if you want to hit the next slide for me, this is a, this is a summary chart of the debt service that's associated with that, with that Gantt chart that's in front of you. So, the gray bars represent our existing debt service. So, anything that was issued before that revenue bond, there, there were a few projects wrapped into that. The blue bars represent any new debt service. And the orange bars, they're kind of transparent, represent the debt service we plan to have with all the ongoing NCDOT projects that have utility-related aspects included. So, you can see that in FY twenty-two, we're going to increase our debt service a little bit. We're going to be just over three million dollars going into future years as we issue more revenue bonds, more SRF loans, get that French Broad project online. We're going to have some debt service costs increasing. So, just, just as we mentioned with the Gantt chart, this debt service cost chart is subject to change just depending on how we choose to finance those items and what kind of rates we can get, what the construction market does. So, a lot of factors go into this, these two models.
Is the, with that chart there, is the intake on the French Broad driving a lot of that?
Yes.
The blue, the big blue?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so that's.
That's grant funded, right?
That is not grant funded, no.
It's low interest.
It's a low interest loan, the state revolving fund.
My question is, I'm assuming lease on here somewhere. With that project, I know that there is no one hundred percent of anything when it comes to climate. But does that almost make our system drought free, I mean drought protected with that second intake?
Hey, Jerry, this is Lee. Yes, it certainly gains us a, a great deal of sustainability during drought. I can't say that it will provide the absolute. You know, it's not the silver bullet, but, but certainly, you know, it's probably on average flows an order of magnitude more water than, than the Mills River. So, I remember back in two thousand seven and eight where the Mills River was running about eighteen cubic feet per second. The French Broad was still running well over a hundred cubic feet per second. So, you know, the Mills was almost dry and.
I know, I mean, that's what precipitated all this project. I remember it well.
That's right. So, yeah, it certainly, it buys us a lot of sustainability during a drought.
Okay. It's, it's just a big price tag for something that is not readily necessary now. But at some point, you have to pull the trigger and build the thing. We've been planning on building it for a long time.
Exactly. And, you know, this also gives us another source, large source for the future as well.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, um, so understanding all those capital projects that we have coming online, that, that means that, you know, we're also recommending a rate increase. But we, we first want to look at where our rates are sitting at. And the School of Government has a, has a great dashboard available that anybody can log on to and compare our utility with others on, on a different number of bases, bases. But this, this graph is showing our, our water and sewer bill for, for a residential customer, comparing that to other utilities with similar number of accounts. So, we're, we're a large utility. So, we're comparing ourselves with others that have more than twenty-five thousand accounts. And compared to our peer group that we've selected, our, our water bill, looking at that first dial chart in the top left corner, it is, is, is very affordable. So, we're, we're at thirty-eight fifty-one. The minimum in our peer group is thirty-three eighteen for three thousand gallons of water and sewer service. And the max is a hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents. So, that dial could, could do to, to increase a little bit, getting towards the green and getting away from that minimum side there. We're doing very good at, with our rate structure at providing a conservation signal to our, our consumers. So, that's based on our price after ten thousand gallons of service. So, we've got a, a structure that encourages our customers to, to conserve their water where they can. That cost recovery ratio is representative. It's a similar calculation to what we have for our revenue bond. So, we're right at one. Again, you know, we want to be a little bit further into the green there. So, that's, that's constituting our, our proposed rate increase. And, and we're relatively confident that despite the rate, rate increase, our, our median affordability, that final dial on the bottom right is going to be very favorable. So, right now, the average customer water bill is only one point one nine percent of their annual household income. So, Brian, on the next couple of slides, I've summarized the water bill and the sewer bill. So, got that information separately if you're interested in looking at that. And I'm willing to take any questions or help with any discussion that you all might have. Okay? So, jumping away from the School of Government's dashboard, we finally, after much anticipation, have our, our rate increase. So, the, the blue shaded cells on the, in the FY twenty twenty-one columns, those, those are our current rates. The FY twenty-one, twenty-two proposed column, we, we've got our next year rates. So, not to hit on all of them, but on the base charge side, our outside customers will go from ten dollars and forty cent, or excuse me, from nine dollars and forty-five cents to ten dollars and forty cents. Inside customers will go from six fifty-two, just for their base charge, to seven forty-three. And our volumetric rates will also change. So, on the residential side, the outside customers will be increasing one dollar exactly from four dollars and sixty cents per one thousand gallons to five dollars and sixty cents. On the inside rate volumetric side, the rate will be increasing from three dollars and seventeen cents to four dollars. This rate recommendation also includes the one hundred and forty percent rate differential. So, city council, beginning last year, directed staff to analyze and continue with a ten-year rate phase-out option. So, with the FY twenty-two budget, we'll be going from a hundred and forty-five percent rate differential to one hundred and forty percent. Okay? On the sewer side, that differential is recommended to remain at one hundred and fifty percent. Our adopted base charge for the current year is ten dollars and ninety cents for the outside city customer. Going into next year, that will increase a dollar and ten cents to twelve dollars per month for the base charge. Inside city customers will see a, you know, about a seventy-five cent increase. So, they'll, they'll be going from seven twenty-seven per month for their base charge to eight dollars. And on the sewer side, we bill everybody the same for, for volumetric charges. On the residential side, so outside city customers will go from paying seven dollars and sixty cents per one thousand gallons of wastewater we treat to eight dollars and fifty-two cents. And on the inside side of that equation, the rate will be increasing from five dollars and seven cents to five dollars and sixty-eight cents. And on the next couple of slides, we have just an analysis of how that plays out on the customer bill. You can see in the top left, we're providing an, an estimate for an inside city residential customer with a basic three-quarter inch connection using three thousand gallons of water each month, which is average according to our, our billing data. So, again, not to, you know, go over all of these, but just looking at the first column, there, you know, based on that assumption, a water bill is about sixteen dollars and three cents this year. That will be going to nineteen dollars and forty-three cents next year. Sewer bill will be going from twenty-two forty-seven to twenty-five oh four, meaning the total utility bill for, for that customer would be thirty-eight fifty this year and forty-four dollars and forty-seven cents next year. and $44.47 next year. And then on the next slide, we've also produced a similar look at a, a commercial customer with a slightly larger two inch connection using 15,000 gallons of, of water and sewer service each month. So just to hit the bottom line, the inside, the inside commercial customer will go from $156.94 utility bill this year to $182.42 utility bill next year. And there are no questions. I can hit on some additional revenue sources, minor revenue sources. The, the next largest revenue source that we can control is our permits and fees, which are only 3.7% of our total revenue. And most of those come from inspection fees and tap fees. So Brian, on the next slide, Brent Detweiler has provided an, an estimate for some water and sewer line inspection fees. We've, we've got these development projects coming online. They will need to have their water and sewer lines inspected. We're offering a very low rate for that, that service. The private sector, I think, is significantly more costly. But we're, we're expecting a total revenue of $198,000 for, for our CCTV line inspection fees in FY 22.
That's the question?
Yes, sir.
Um. I'm sorry that I don't know the answer to this. Do only people from the water and sewer department do these inspections? Or also people from engineering do these inspections?
These are people from the water sewer department that are on a CCTV crew.
Okay. So the, the crew that already does the TV stuff.
Yes, sir.
This, this is in addition to their normal activities?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and Jerry, also, we do have construction, you have, and we're actually gonna, in this budget, you'll see what I add. We have currently two, two or three construction inspectors currently, right? Three can, three currently, and we're going to add a fourth based on the construction projects. We, we have construction inspectors that visit all, that will visit all construction projects on a regular basis and, and track, you know, make sure everything's being installed correctly. So we're looking at water sewer lines, we're looking at street insulation, we're looking at sidewalks. So.
Those people work in what department?
Engineering. They, they work in engineering. Yeah.
So there's somewhat engineering used to make sure this, I guess for the water lines, it's only the water sewer department. But these engineers also look at these?
Yeah.
They look at all of them?
Look at all of them. Yeah. So we're, we, we have, so the engineering, construction inspectors are there regularly. And then this inspection's done at the end of the, or as the lines are completely installed before they're put into service.
The construction inspectors, are they city employees or people that we contract with?
City employees.
Okay. Thank you.
And just a, a final estimate on a, on another minor revenue source, our, our tap fees. So we're, we're budgeting for those based on historical averages. And those just show, you know, annually, how much development we've had in the system. So you, you pay a tap fee when you want to connect to our utility. So our historical average on the water side is 319,000. We're conservatively budgeting $300,000 for those revenues. On sewer side, our historical average is $71,000. Sorry, $71,000. And we're budgeting 67,325, just again, being conservative. That's all we've got for the water and sewer fund. Any questions on water and sewer? Look like you have a question.
Oh, no, I was just gonna tell you, you were depressing.
Oh, I was? I'm sorry.
In your tone.
Okay.
There's a lot of projects. That's a lot of flipping money.
Well, it's, it's, it's a big system and again, lots of projects and trying to make sure we're there with the growth, right? Trying to make sure we're upsizing lines, DOT projects, which are really out of our control. You know, when they make those improvements. So when they're, you know, that they cover part of it and, and we're trying to work with them to, if they had to remove, replace a line that we upsize the line while they're there to get the most efficient, you know, that they cover the line replacement. And then we call the, we, we cover the betterment. So the city benefits somewhat, but it does. With so many projects coming at one time with DOT, it, it causes us to, to have those expenses that, you know, we may not be doing right now if it wasn't for the DOT project. So that's, those are a little bit out of our, out of our control. But it's just what happens in a growing community, in a, in an area that, again, where we're looking at a place that people want to be and, and catching up a little bit from projects being delayed in the past.
That big on the treatment plant, $17 million piece. Maybe that's one of those things with my jersey that we've been talking about a long time. And it's so critical for not just quality of water, but the quantity of the water. We don't want to go through that again if we can help it. The drought restrictions. But this is the one to me. It's, nothing's more important than water.
Oh, yes.
We gotta get it right. Appreciate the work.
Yes, sir.
Our water and sewer fees are still about half of what most of our cell, cellphone bills are. Just put, just put that in perspective. I mean.
And when you compare us, we're still.
I remind my children of that all the time.
All right. So we will transition into the general fund and we'll finish up with kind of the other smaller MSD funds. And we'll, we'll try to get out of here right around lunch. Yeah, we'll get through by noon. If we need a break, let me know. Yeah. 12 o'clock, we'll be out here. So we're going to start with some financial table overviews. Like Adam ran us through. We're gonna run through the revenues, expenses, fund balance. And then we're going to hit on the kind of the strategic planning model and our future priorities and kind of what we're looking at for that next four years. Again, so like Adam, we're showing our adopted revised budgets, our estimate and how our actuals came in. And again, the, the purpose of showing this is, you know, we, we like to check ourselves, right? So, you know, we develop a budget, we know the budget's conservative. And Adam and I want to make sure when we say, hey, this is what we're gonna, we estimate this is really what's gonna happen. We want to see how we actually did to that estimate because there's no point in forecasting if you don't go back and see how accurate you were with your forecast. So you can learn from it. So on the revenue side, our estimate was about $16.9 million or 3% over the adopted budget. You can see we came in at 17.3 million or 105% of the adopted budget. The dollar change from the estimate to actual was about 2% to the good side. So we were, we're a little low on the estimate. We came in a little better than we expected, which is great. On the expense side, we estimate about a 96% spend on the general fund. We hit about a 96% spend. The estimate was only $9,000 off. So that was pretty close. Felt pretty good about that one. And then ultimately, it was a really strong year. I do want to highlight, we've converted to, to financing vehicles rather than paying with cash just to keep our vehicles up to date and having a, a solid fleet where we're not losing some costs in repair and maintenance. But in total, we put 1.18 million dollars back into fund balance, increasing our fund balance from 7.3 million to 8.5 million. You'll see how critical that is as we go through the rest of this presentation. On this one, we're looking at the requested column FY 22 to the recommended column. And sorry, I don't have the highlights like Adam does. I forgot to add this in here. So the requested budget, we've increased our revenues from 17.7 million to 18.4 million per recommendation. We'll talk a little bit to that. We bumped up, you can see the dollar change on the right. We bumped up our adware taxes. That equates to a three cent tax increase. So we'll discuss in more detail here shortly. And then we, we felt comfortable bumping our sales tax revenues up about 132,000 from our initial estimates in February. Yes, sir.
I know that we have been doing things this morning with the comment that you just made and what we talked about with regard to pay and everything. Are you thinking that we're going to have to adjust the 3% rate increase that you just mentioned?
I do not.
3 cents, excuse me.
I do not. And I'll explain that later. On the expenditure side, so we're looking at, we had $21.5 million in our requested budget. A lot of that being capital and operating costs. When we got to our final recommendation, you can see we were comfortable bumping up our personnel benefits cost sum. And then also we, we were able to trim up our operating of about $440,000 and our capital expense got trimmed down 1.1 million dollars from the requested budget from February. In total, we're estimating a fund balance appropriation. So the recommended budget is 1.26 million dollars of fund balance appropriation. But in reality, we think at a 95% spend and 103% of revenues will hit $312,000 to the good. And lastly, changing the dollar change and percent change column to look at our revised budget, furthest left column to our recommended budget for FY 22. You can see where the increases are in, in sales tax, in adware taxes, putting our investment earnings and investment income back into the budget where we, we pretty much zeroed it out due to the pandemic, just to be as conservative as we could. And then on the personnel benefit side, on the expense side, you see the $790,000 increase in the general fund alone, 247,000 in operating, the decrease over the prior year in capital. The big thing here, the 2.15 million in capital and the FY 21 revised, that's not a typical spend for us. We normally spend about a million per year on pay go capital. This is a result of the project wheel, project. So that project wheel is kind of embedded in the general fund throughout this. But at the end of the day, that all will net out ultimately for us. So I've kind of pulled that out of any fund balance considerations, but it will, you will see impacts on the June 30 audit from Project Wheel. So you can see 1.25 million in capital is about standard. And then you see an increase in debt service, which we'll talk a little bit more about as we go more in detail here. So the taxes, right now, we're estimating a 1.3% increase in property values, real and personal. For the city of Hendersonville, I, I think that's conservative. I think hopefully we'll hit.
Sorry.
I was gonna say.
I mean, that is conservative.
Yes.
We're.
That is definitely conservative.
Yeah. Well, I, I think 2% is probably realistic because it's only a reappraisal of personal property. Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Jeff.
I'm just saying that, you know.
I am.
Yeah.
That is a pretty conservative based upon the market. I know. That's how you have to budget.
Yeah, no, 1.3, it might be two. I mean, that's the difference we're talking about. It might get to 2%. Assuming a collection rate of 98% and then the, the tax rate is an increase of 3 cents per hundred dollars. Our existing tax rate of 49 cents would go to 52 cents per hundred. Generates around $588,000 with a 98% collection rate in real and personal property and about $42,000 on motor vehicle property.
Originally, when we talked about this meeting a year ago, that was going to be 6%. Yeah. That was saying, not 6%, no, 6 cents, not 6%.
Correct.
Right. So a year ago, when we began discussing this, this was going to be 6 cents.
Yeah. And we'll talk about the things that are carrying us here.
Actually, Jerry goes back farther than that when we did the safer grant.
Oh, I guess it was. You're right.
Two or three years ago, we were at IEM during our retreat. We kind of showed you, it was, that's where we came up with the six cents and Brian may have that. But it was, yeah, six cents. It goes back a couple of years ago.
Yeah. And we're, we're doing a lot more. I think that salary and benefits spend, you know, that was not built into the forecast then.
Oh, no.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll talk about.
Covered the safer grant. Right.
And I think this hits to this, the strong economy and let's, let's pour more fuel on the fire here locally and get in a really good spot as a community. So looking at Sess Valley, you can see the trend over the past 20 or so years. Again, we've, we've highlighted this before, the really strong growth we had in the 2000s. And then the post kind of recession era has finally come to an end with most recent revaluation in FY 20. We jumped from that 1.7 billion value mark up to 2.15 billion dollars. And you can see the, the two bars in yellow are estimates for FY 21 and FY 22. Once we get our audit, we'll know those actual, actual value numbers. But you can see kind of in between the reval years, it is, it's smaller jumps in those, those valuations. So potentially if we get back into CO4 through O8, you can see how strong that growth was. Maybe we could hit some years like that leading into the next revaluation. And then just another way to, to visualize this, you can see the, the percent change year over year. Again, you see those kind of bigger 3 to 4% jumps in even over 5% on a year over year basis in the early 2000s, outside of the revals and then the really strong revals. And then just like no, no growth post recession until our recovery here in FY 20. So we're, we're hoping these 21 and 22 valuation increases are going to be higher and more typical of the early 2000s. My favorite thing to talk about is sales tax and we'll get into that now.
Gymnastics.
Exactly. The, the FY 21 actuals right now are averaging 16% over FY 20 actuals, which is really unheard of. When we were talking this time last year, we were expecting a minus 10% in the first quarter, minus seven in the second quarter, minus three in the third, and then a plus three in the fourth. And it's been gangbusters for sales tax. And we're going to talk a little bit more on why we think it's, it's, that's happening here in a little bit. So ultimately, the actuals for FY 21 are $765,000 over budget, which is great. And this, this is the type of thing that is helping float us to lessen that tax burden increase and also help pay for our employee benefits and salaries. The FY 22 budget that we're proposing is almost a million dollars over FY 21 budget. And that is a 5% increase over the FY 21 estimate. So we'll look at this, we'll look both at that in more detail. And then finally, the, the, one of the best parts, right? So FY 22, the local distribution, when it finally gets here and everything that happened a year ago with values and taxes comes to affect us for the future year, we're dropping about 0.1% of our, our share of the local sales taxes or $50,000. So.
That will change in '23, correct?
It will change in '23.
Right.
Based on what people do with taxes and values this year.
Yeah.
This sales tax comparison chart is a lot. If you look on the far left, you can see when the sale is made. So we start in July. Our collection doesn't come in until October. So you see your sales, your collection month in each quarter of the year broken out. The very bottom, you can see a total column of total sales taxes. We transfer a portion of those sales taxes to our MSD funds, 5% to Main Street and 1% to Seventh Avenue based on total value. And then the subtotal of the general fund, subtotal of Main Street and the subtotal of Seven. In FY 1920, our sales tax is totaled $3.85 million in collections. Our FY 21 actuals right now, the next column over, the data in blue, we haven't received yet, right? So the May collection is going to happen on the 15th of this month. And we just have estimates in. Right now, we're estimating 4.32, 4.34 million dollars in sales tax. That's a 12.74% increase over FY 20. And that's only assuming 8% for the rest of the year. You know, right now, we're averaging 16. And once we hit the June, July, August collections, once those months hit, that's when we took the, the, that's when we actually were affected by sales tax from the pandemic. So those are going to be probably even higher than 16%. So sales taxes is doing great and it's going to continue to do well. And it's going to continue to be a great revenue source for us, especially for the next year or so. That being said, is an elastic revenue source, so it can come back down just as fast as it goes up. So can't rely on it long-term. The FY 21 budget, we've, so the budget was 3.5 million. You can see already, we think we're going to be at 4.3. That's $800,000 over the budget. You can see already, we think we're going to be at 4.3. That's $800,000 over the budget. And then FY22, we've budgeted a 5% increase. That's $4.5 million or a million dollars over the 21 budget. So this just kind of breaks down that initial slide. If you have any specific questions, we can dive into any of these specific numbers. But overall, sales tax is, is doing very strong for us. Just reminding us of the distribution method, so it changed back during the recession, 2008, 2009. That's what this, this slide shows. This was also when Medicaid swap for Article 44 of sales tax happened at the state level. And it was a loss essentially initially to counties, but they also took a liability off their books. And cities were required to be held harmless by the counties. So the county still had to pay the cities their sales tax portion of sales tax. And that's when we switched. You can see our per capita share was 9.64% back in 2008. And then our January 2009 percent share was 8.87 after that. Looking more recently, on the left, you can see these charts that show FY20 actuals, FY21 actuals and our projection for FY22. So FY22 actuals, you see each jurisdiction broke now on the left. You see the per capita breakdown and then highlighted the ad verum tax levy breakdown, which we're under. So you can see Hendersonville was 8.48% of the total in FY20. In '21, we bumped up to 18.8. That's why we're doing so well, partially on the 16% average right now. And that's a result of the revale. And then FY22 projection, we're projected to drop to 8.69. And that one's just pretty much solely based on tax-based growth. There was only one tax value change in FY22 and it was Gert and Fire District increased a penny. And that goes into the county's percent share. So, but I did want to highlight that reval year is such an intense year for what happens here. Even with, so the, the county decreased by about a half cent. The Fire Districts collectively increased 11 and a half cents on their tax rates during the reval year. So they also had growth in revale and then raised taxes collectively 11 and a half cents. And that, that was a, a big factor to increase in county's proportionate share. You can see Saluda increased by 2 cents, Flat Rock increased by 2 cents, Mills River increased by 1 cent, Laurel Park a half cent. Our Main Street decreased 2 cents and then Seventh Avenue went up 5 cents. So all of that combined with the revale, our revale was so strong, it was one of the strongest in the counties that we still gained on our percent distribution share of the total sales tax.
The last part there was what I was, was gonna ask, but obviously put it on there. So whenever we play with Main Street, Seventh Avenue, that affects this overall thing as well.
It affects overall, yeah. It's the total tax levy of the jurisdiction. So talking about a couple of things we're thinking through with sales tax, this was really interesting to me and potentially explains why sales tax is so strong right now, is the different stimulus and the, the different relief packages. You can see this, this is tracking personal disposable income of Americans. And back in January of '22, and it, you know, it was pretty straightforward. You know, it was about 16 and a half billion dollars of disposable income that Americans had. After the first stimulus, that jumped to $19 billion. That's $3 billion. I mean, that's a huge increase in disposable income. And you can see it just slowly kind of draws down. I, I think that, you know, that is Americans, you know, being at home and spending and, and people in our community, spending money in the economy, online, at grocery stores. And I think it reflects what we're seeing in sales taxes. You can see the, the other jump here in '21 of January, and then with ARP, you can see we're up to almost $21.8 billion of disposable income. So this is potentially a forecast of, of why sales tax is doing what it's doing during a pandemic and what we might see over at least the next 12 months.
Are we concerned at all though, like about market contraction and then inflation? And then how that, all of this like dumping money in right now is all great, but then in two years, you know, are we going to need to be forecasting for?
Yeah, there's a concern of affordability, especially with supply chain. You know, if lumber or something pinches, right? And then demand, you no longer have demand. What happens at that point? And so that, there's unknowns out there. That's, there's very larger factors, right? Than, than our local community and figuring out what's going to happen here. But I think at least our next 12-month outlook, I think locally looks good for sales taxes. It's just what, what's the long-term? How, how do we manage that going forward?
The, the other side is going to be cost of goods and cost of construction, particularly on the water and sewer capital project side. Is one thing we've asked our team to do is, you know, I'll, I'll go back just for a minute for water and sewer is we've got a lot of projects in the hopper, kind of going to construction is we've asked our team to not start anything for 12 months. Basically, if it's not already started in development, not to start anything new for a 12-month period to see, so we can get through these projects and see where we are, right? We need to, because it, it takes three to five years to develop a project really from start to finish. And so we've got enough buildup demand that we wanted to put a year gap in there so that we can really see where, we can evaluate where we are when we get on the backside of these projects.
You don't want to potentially overspend right now.
Exactly.
Knowing that it could calm down 30, 40% in the future.
We saw that, you know, it's a, hopefully it's a lesson we learned from NC DOT with getting too aggressive. And I mean, we've still got projects out there and there's still, there will be emergencies and things we have to do. But just to, to get through our projects, let's, let's not start anything at all in the next 12 months. So we'll have that gap.
Well, another thing too, is the Amazon effect.
Yeah. Yeah.
They collect sales tax.
The state, we, we just got our internet sales tax laws straight in February of 2020. So we really benefited of having that set up to be ready to go. And another item that's kind of unknown and, and very uncertain are refunds. There's no rhyme or reason to refunds, you know, a new high school project that is, I, I don't know the budget, but millions of dollars at the high school, there are going to be sales tax refunds on all that, that construction material. And that's going to hit locally at some point, all the projects we're doing, all the projects nonprofits are doing, churches, things like that. There will be sales tax refunds and there's, like I said, there's no standard reporting or request requirements through these. They just come in as people submit them and you can see kind of the volatility, especially highlighting here in August of 2018. We had a 5,630% spike in refunds, probably a result of some major project that got filed for, for a refund. So again, all this construction is great. It's pumping the economy up here. But at some point, it does have an effect on our local sales taxes. Right now, the state is down 12% of refunds year-over-year. So there's not as many refunds at the statewide level, but locally, we're up 20% over FY20.
Practically though, the refund, we don't have to give money back. We just get less money because that sales tax is in essence refunded back to those companies or entities.
Yeah, we just get less, our collection is.
Get less.
Yes, correct. So that, that's another item to keep in consideration. I wanted to highlight too, just how unknown this is, is, you know, looking at other post-pandemic responses. You can see the SARS outbreak, the Fukushima disaster in Japan and the MERS outbreak in South Korea. All of those pandemic responses from a economic standpoint resulted in, in decline in economy. And then followed by some sort of different economic rebound. So I just want to highlight, this is atypical. I don't think this is a normal pandemic response from an economic standpoint from a sales tax, sales tax perspective. I put to the moon here just as a joke, I don't know what the response is, right? These are the typical post-pandemic responses. It's either like rapid stabilization and a little bit of cooling off, which maybe we just have accelerated that. Maybe that is what we're doing. Maybe it's rapid stabilization, but during what was happening. There's short-term pantry loading, those people just running out and buying furtively, you know, toilet paper and things like that. And then a, a big drop back to reality. And then there's a dip in rebound and that's kind of a, you know, so everything remains slow because people are hesitant and cautious. But then things peak back up, come, come more, more normal times. So again, this is just to say, it's very unknown what sales tax is going to do. In summary, why I feel comfortable just budgeting a 5% increase, I think it's safe. I think it will give us an opportunity if come December and January, we have some sort of expense like paying class and we've had more months to study and understand where sales tax is going. We can do it a budget and then meant to increase our sales tax revenue and in turn, increase our employee pay come mid-year. All right. So the, I'm just going to highlight the two big ones. Any other questions on revenues at this point? It's an 8.1% increase over last year's budget, a 3-cent tax increase and a 5% budgeted forecasted increase for our sales tax revenues and bringing our investment earnings and our sales and services back to their pre-pandemic levels. All of this pays for what we'll talk about on these next slides. Again, just can keep it a high level here because we, we know most of this. The one piece I want to highlight on personnel and benefits outside of what we've already talked about is the retirement contribution continues to increase. We're now at 11.35%. And for regular employees, 12.1% for law enforcement officers. So we're, we're contributing, the city contributes that amount of their salary to the pension system every paycheck. When I started, it was 7.65%. So we've, it's been a market, market increase and we'll see where that continues to go as they continue to make sure the pension fund is stable and is fully funding or close to funding itself. It's one of the best funded ones in the state, but it does require.
On that, and employees get to participate in the pension program, they have to put in 30 years.
Or is there? There's different levels. The, the full maximum amount you get is a 30-year.
Right. At what, at what point are, is there some invest, are they invested to get something? Five?
Five.
Okay.
And employees pay into it as well. So it's contract from the city and the employee.
I'm very aware of that.
Some sort of though, different calculation from the 30s. Is there's like?
If you're, if you're age 55.
Years or something.
And you do 10 years. I don't know all of them, John. Do you know?
I can tell you, I mean, that's what, that's what teachers have. It may not be the same calculation, but.
Yeah, my husband's trying to explain it to me like a million times and I don't understand.
As you're older and the longer you've worked, there is a multiplier that you use to determine how much you get. So can we talk some other time and I'll try to explain?
Yes. It's very confusing.
The, the other big item I want to highlight is the safer grant. So the 2018 safer grant, we, we start paying 100% of those firefighters this year in November. Will be responsible 100% of their, their salaries. So that, that grant will be spent this year. That was three firefighters. Our 12 firefighters that we hired in 2021, 2020, 2021 right now, sorry. We'll, we start paying 65% of their salaries in March of 2022. And then, and then another year would be 100% in March of 2023. So we've built that into the budgets and the forecasts. And then lastly, we've added new positions, kind of following continuous improvement, addressing vulnerabilities. Two new police officer positions, one diversity, equity, inclusion, HR coordinator, one risk manager, one purchasing administrator, one property maintenance worker and one part-time administrative assistant for the fire department. There were a lot more requests and again, this is all a balance of the new, newer benefits, taking care of existing employees, adding new employees for service demand and then obviously the capital and the projects that we'll talk about here in a second. So this was our first step. We know in, in future years, we're going to have more firefighters, police officers, public works needs within the community. I should say IT, I guess.
So I'll ask this question. With the, the assuming, and I am going to say assuming, all the paperwork gets done and everybody's happy and we swap properties and no longer have Berkeley on our maintenance to set, save us any money at all?
Not, do you want to talk to it, John? I know we both talked about this recently.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just wondering.
So we've had that discussion, you know, Berkeley. So I think what it does is it puts off the need, the, so we've got one property maintenance worker. It probably, it puts off the need for two property maintenance workers. Because I've given up the, the, and there's still maybe needs in the future. Because yes, we're giving up Berkeley and the main time and expense obviously is the ball field, the baseball field is, is the big one there. But we're still cutting 25 acres of grass. We're, we are exchanging, but at the end of the day, we will be exchanging for property that is much more visible. And with, and with the park improvements that I know that we're going to want to do, it's probably going to break us even right now. And so that's, that's where I think we are.
Yeah, thanks, John. On the operating side, it's a 4%, 5% increase over the prior year budget. And really what, what you'll see here is really more is a decrease when you take out the one-time items. So we've got the contingencies, this is where the contingencies for paying class show up. So that will just shift up into personnel and benefits here, that $250,000. And the, you can see the dollar change is 247,000. So once that's out, operating costs have remained stagnant. We also have $200,000 in here for a comp plan. We relayed that in the third memo of why we thought that was important, seeing nods that, I won't dive too deep into that. But Lou and his crew will, will be working on that and hopefully coming back to you. And we'll probably have a lot of meetings on that over the next 12 months. And then we removed the special appropriations of the $100,000 to build that into an ARP kind of funding campaign through 2024.
Funding campaign.
Funding campaign. That's, I just made that up there. On the capital side, again, this, remember that Project Wheel is in FY21. So that's why this looks like a really large decrease. In reality, that $1.25 million recommendation is a little bit over our, our historical average. We're financing the replacement of $800,000 worth of vehicles, eight marked police cars, one unmarked police department vehicle, two fire department vehicles and four public works vehicles. We've built out a long-term replacement schedule for our vehicles and our fleet that go on a four-year amortization debt cycle. That way, we start rolling through four years. It's going to be a little light for us on the front end. And then we get to about a half million dollar spend per year, replacing a large number of the city vehicles. Other pay-go cash capital is about half a million dollars for fleet service-related equipment, extrication equipment for the fire department, thermal imaging cameras in the fire department, beginning the process of replacing the pedestrian vehicular bridge at Patton Park and then also resurfacing the city operations facility parking area. And as you know, we might have potential for additional pay-go for park improvements pending the Berkeley swap discussions. That will be added in once that, that happens. Lastly, debt service. So a $305,000 increase over the revised 21 budget. The head, police department headquarters interim financing of about $129,000, $192,000. The full loan of around $93,000. Our new fire engine number three debt service around $70,000 in the vehicle loan, starting in FY22. This is a half of a year payment at $110,000. So that, that makes up the increase. One thing we realized when, you know, fine tuning and sharpening the pencil and all this yesterday, late afternoon, we've got about $150,000 more than we need in this debt service line, which can be shifted into short-term disability and paid family leave.
As a magician, man.
And lastly, the fund balance scenario is Jerry. So we've got our worst case. We spend 97% of our total budget and we only bring in 102% of our budget revenues. We'll actually appropriate about $200,000 based on the historical average. We'll put 300,000 back into fund balance and at a best case, you know, we, we really do well on revenues. We put about half a million back into fund balance and we need to continue doing this because I'm, well, I'm going to show you here on the future impact slides. So yeah, here, here is a fund balance. So you can see it's increased and we're set to steadily increase. The one thing to really notice here is even though fund balance is increasing, you can see in FY22 that, and FY21, our percent available is actually dropping. And it's just because the. Uh, and it's just because the way the calculation works is when expense grows, if your fund balance isn't growing, your available is gonna drop. And our expenses are growing. You can see that compared to the three calculations, I really should just take G F O A off of here. Um, but it is another way to calculate it, the L G C, the local government commission is looking at that blue line, which we're in good shape and they're looking at that red line, that's our population group average. And you can see it's uh, you know, kind of creeps up towards us, but. We got some percentage cushion there and we've got this goal built into. Our strategic plan at twenty five percent right now is what we've built it in that, not really sure where the population group average is gonna go. So when you're looking at our future projects, um. We added the vehicle replacement program into to the future projects list, so you'll see annual vehicle replacement F Y twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, so on so forth. Is built into the schedule now, we've added park improvements at Edwards and Dogwood for one and a half million dollars. And then we added the city hall and ops renovations at three million dollars, um, part of that being the the outside exterior work that needs to happen on this building. Those are estimates, we don't have any kind of budget estimates from any architects at this point, this is all very preliminary. And then we've built in some uh, inflation costs into the fire station one contract uh, construction, not contract. Uh, project at nine and a half million dollars for that project. When you look at that and you look at kind of when you look at the system and and what it's putting out for us. You can see over here on the left, the the fiscal year is going down through F Y thirty, you can see the targeted tax increase, uh, three cents in F Y twenty two. We're building in three cents in F Y twenty three, so that there's your six cents, we're just spreading it out. Um, still needed and then we've got a fifteen percent recoup of a revow, you know, assuming we have a really good revow, we'd need at least fifty percent to get us to this stage. Uh, the the bottom line at this stage though is um, we need additional revenue going into twenty four and twenty five. When that uh, fire station construction loan hits, it's a it's a large payment and it. It uh, it puts us in a position that we really need to to focus on on getting a good revow out of F Y twenty four. Another way to look at this and you see the red bars, that's that's when we drop below that twenty five percent minimum ratio. And then also on the far right, our debt service top rating expenditures, we really don't wanna get too close to fifteen percent. The highest we get here is fourteen point two percent, um, that's when rating agencies are gonna look at us and not not look favorably upon that that ratio at fifteen percent. So another way to look at this is is the net earnings on the left, starting in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty five, you can see twenty twenty was a, you know, great year, we put money back in the fund balance like we needed to. Uh, and then twenty three, you know, is when we kind of start losing that edge. And you can see based on the proposed debt service model, we get up to about three and a half million. On our debt service costs, we're gonna be at about one point, one and a half uh, this current year. So that that's the big challenge for us, so I've played around with the model, looked at it different ways. This is targeting a a one cent tax increase in F Y twenty five and it I bumped the revaluation up to twenty three percent. So you can see, you know, that that gets us in better position, there's still three years in there that we dropped below that twenty five percent level. And really, it's it's gonna be cost control and it's gonna be revaluation, we've got time to work on this. It's F Y twenty two right now, we've got a comfortable budget, we're gonna continue to put money back in fund balance, but we gotta know what's coming down the road. And we gotta have, we we need to be prepared to recoup revenues at revow. And we need to be prepared to to make sure we're very diligent on these capital project costs. Yeah, Jerry.
With regard to that chart there, so if we to look told the treasurer, local government commission, you know, two years ahead of time, hey. We're, this is what we're budgeting, this we're predicting, we think for three years we may drop below twenty five percent, but we have a plan in place where that will bump back up. Do we get the mastagram?
I talked to John about this yesterday, the exact conversation, Jerry, and I, you know, I think. I think from a due diligence standpoint, it's gonna be, and I think we're gonna have to go as staff and go meet with them and say, hey. This is, this is our local community's direction, the city council's direction. Will you weigh, you know, knowing that this plan is in place, will you not ding us when we hit this? There's no guarantee or likelihood that they'll say, sure. Um, especially with the direction they've been taking recently, they've been very active and and especially small government finance and they're doing much more. I don't wanna say takeovers, but uh, assist assistance, yeah, with with local governments in North Carolina, so. We're in great shape, I think we and we're doing a lot of really good planning and I think that will go some with them, but I don't know if they're just gonna. Wave that criteria for us, but I think, you know, when John and I were talking, we think it's probably a good due diligence stuff just to do it, make the ask and see what they say.
Yeah, to have the conversation, put the plan together, put these, put this kind of presentation together and say, look, this is, we're in a growing community. These are, you know, service demands are there, this is what's gotta to to keep level of service for our citizens and without, you know. Putting too much of a burden on on our community, w- we're watching where we are, we we've got a plan in place um, and and go meet with it, so.
Right, because the the some of the assumptions here are, you know, twenty three percent revaluation, I mean, that's.
That's big, big. And 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 we are and we're in very good financial shape, so just be clear about that and we're trying to, you know, one of our goals and priorities of the council is to be financially sustainable, so that's why we show. This information so that.
I totally get it, and I totally understand as well, as we talked with the gentleman from the school of government that. They're, you know, requiring us to keep this, you know, large pot of money on hand. So that uh. The state feels that we're financially, uh, you know, sustainable. But also, it seems to me that exactly what we said, we we need to say, hey, look. You know, as far as taxation goes, I mean, you got seven cents up there and that's including through from this year, that's asking the taxpayers a lot in a short period of time. Um, we have a plan in place so that we can, you know, get back to the fund balance that we need. Please don't slap our hands.
And the thing, the thing I wanna expand on too on this model is it includes normal growth, you know, hiring new physicians, things like that. It doesn't forecast what a paying class study is gonna be, so when thinking about the full list. Right, so we've got fire engine threes done, police headquarters is in the in the process, Seventh Avenue is ready to go to bid this fall. We're gonna do annual vehicle replacements, so after that, city hall and ops renovations is an opportunity for us. You know, it's three million dollars built in here, that's an opportunity that we we can take to see how much we can cut off of that. We've got to replace engine one and we've got to replace uh, ladder one. The fire, we gotta do something about a fire station, nine and a half, I'm hoping is really high. The estimate we got from the architect is eight point two, so there's some potential savings there, but you really don't know what's gonna happen with the market we're in. I don't wanna risk going out to bid and just getting blown out of the water on a project like that. I wanna make sure we have the a safe amount budgeted. And then one and a half million for Edward Edwards and Dogwood, we don't, you know, that that's just a grabbing that out of the sky, so. Those are our areas for flexibility, that's where we can adjust and especially thinking, you know. Right, so let's say we get ten percent on the pay, you know, a jump in pay, that's gonna be a big impact on cutting into whatever the pain classes come back at. If we still need another ten percent on the back end, we've gotta find a way to build that into this as well. So that's where the this gets tight, running into the revow year and that's where kind of, I'm gonna I'm gonna pause at this point, John, just for general discussion. Uh, feedback on on the general fund, these just general governmental projects, any other, you know, detail y'all like would like to see? Anything we really need to change, uh, just what are what are your thoughts here?
So, none of these projections include the roughly thousand additional dwellings, right? And their their tax values are their values?
It increase, it includes base level growth, it doesn't include like huge growth, so, right, that is one thing, the chicken and egg, right, that John was talking about. If places like Clear Creek and Project Wheel in the community continues to grow like that. It will be much better for this forecast and that's why you gotta take it with a grain of salt, like you gotta think about it, right?
Right.
But you also gotta take those those red boxes with a grain of salt, knowing especially with revows or great opportunities to recoup a lot of revenue.
And those are, and that's figuring a ninety eight percent collection rate, which were significantly typically higher than that even, right?
Yeah, we're doing better than that.
And then what? I guess a lot of my concern is that, you know, people who own property and pay abhorrent taxes. Continue to kind of get a lot of the burden of the growth and the services, police and fire and, you know. My personal opinion is is that should be more equally distributed amongst people who are buying and using things here, not just owning property here. Because, you know, people are using those services and maybe not necessarily paying for those services. And so, you know, the sales tax, how much of an increase in. Like of a penny or something like that, a sales tax, could you potentially lobby to?
If we got, this is the first time I haven't put this in the presentation, I'm regretting not doing it now, but the quarter cent sales tax local option that some communities have and some don't, like we don't. Um, there's local bills out there right now in the legislature proposing this for, I think Pineville and and others. That type of revenue source, right, quarter of a penny on the sales tax generates about six pennies at least, based on our old numbers, six pennies on the property tax rate.
I know we talked about this before, but you know, I just, I feel like. Well, if at first you don't succeed, try, try again, that's like.
We'll have a little conversation today after lunch, we can talk about it. I know, I mean, I, it makes no sense that we can't use that because that is, I agree with you completely. The users are paying the fees.
I think to continue burdening essentially the taxpayers. You know, I mean, it's great that things are growing, it's a great place to live, you know, cost of services and goods does continue to rise, but. Um, I think to equally distribute the amount of, you know, financial burden and growth is more of a fair thing and I think we should. Seriously seek that option.
We could prepare presentations or whatever is needed. John, take the lead on that is.
Yeah, we'd be glad to do it and. See if we can get added to the um. Get added to the couple of bills that are out there.
I mean, I I'd like to add as well, I know we've talked about it and it. Makes people uncomfortable, but the some, at least even if it's voluntary payment in lieu of taxes. Just something offered to churches and nonprofits, would you be willing to help pay something and we'll come up with a number. I know I learned that. Land that's owned by the U S Department of Interior, they pay that in those counties to help pay for schools, that's a federal program, so the. The federal government pays payment in lieu of taxes, so they can fund schools in those counties where there's a lot of federally owned land. So, um. I I don't mind taking that trumpet if necessary, uh, but it does seem to me like it is, as Jen pointed out, an equity thing there, which is. You know, people expect the police to show up and the fire department to show up and I don't think it's asking too much to say, would you consider? You know, helping the the city pay for the services. Yeah, you know, I mean, I just think it's a fairness thing.
That's the problem.
No.
Yeah, I I I, well, I apologize that you've been beaten down, I'm sorry you've been beaten down about it, but. Yeah, I know you can't, I'm just saying that it just seems to me that.
I think you like a good spanking, I always love.
It just seems to me that uh. There are enough reasonable people maybe to discuss it, that we might find people to participate. Right, and we can sing their songs because I I don't think, in my opinion, the the protections afforded to non prophesies churches. I totally understand that, but there's still an expectation that they are going to use services. I don't think that's going against the idea of their protections by having to help pay for the services.
Was it a half a billion dollars in um, nonprofit um, real estate in the city?
Well, you should put up that chart again.
It's that gigantic skyscraper.
You wanna see that one?
That's my favorite chart.
Maybe we should, how would that be our homepage on the city Hendersonville? Graphic behind all the pictures.
I guess, John, I'm saying, I know that that's not easy for a manager to. Well, uh, to pursue, but I I know that to me, it just does seem like a fairness argument and I'm offering myself. On the chopping block, to help at least discuss with some organizations that I think would do it.
I mean, it doesn't hurt.
Are you talking about the volunteer side? Yes. Yeah, I know we're not gonna mandate it, but on the volunteer side, I think some people will do, I think some organizations will do it if we ask them.
And and I don't think it's necessarily staff that should be going out and requesting it, we as elected officials should be. They staff can give us the numbers.
Right.
Should be a council initiated activity.
Any other input on projects or revenues, anything we need to take back with us and refine?
The project there of Edwards Park and Dogwood Park, um, I I'm looking closely, they're just in order, there is no sort of. There's a F Y, I think, twenty twenty three, is that right?
Yeah, you can see the timing.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry, third call, I see it, okay.
That's when the uh, loan, the payment would begin.
Gotcha, so that is in the near future, not the far future.
We're we're building a fire station, we gotta build some parks.
No, I get it, yeah, yeah. We're also hoping that the Fed decides to keep those interest rates low, which is what they've indicated they're going to do, even if we get a bump. In inflation, at least for this year, that's what they've indicated.
Right, I'm gonna move on from this slide. I can get my mouse to work. Maybe not. Alright, so in summary, the general fund is in great shape for F Y twenty two, we expect to put money back into fund balances in the year and. We'll continue to budget financially sustainably and uh, prepare for these future projects and costs. Couple other governmental funds we'll cover, just the Main Street M S D fund, uh, it's in great shape after the community development uh, reorganization. Uh, the total recommended budget is five hundred and three thousand dollars for the Main Street M S D. That includes three personnel, a downtown manager, a downtown events coordinator and a part time downtown events coordinator. Who I know, I think the part time coordinator is starting today, the day before the market, so that should be a fun first couple of days working with us. We also have our debt service in here for the uh, public restroom project. Uh, one key highlight of this fund is there's a recommended two cent tax decrease for Main Street. Knowing the goal of council a couple of years ago was to start incorporating a more unified approach to the downtown program. You know, we've taken the steps to merge the two two boards at this point, that's a one one singular advisory council. Uh, and we raised taxes on Seventh uh, last year, um, so we're doing a two cent tax decrease on Main Street. Bringing those closer together, it can afford it, sales tax benefits, both of these funds as well, so um, that that's a huge benefit here and really. We didn't wanna adjust Seventh until the streetscape was complete, so uh, we're holding off on any changes on Seventh Avenue. Um, so Main Street, uh, bottom line, the estimate is about a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars in fund balance at the end of the year for F Y twenty two. Uh, putting in a really strong position moving forward. Seventh Avenue is uh, doing equally as well, probably a little bit tighter and could afford to raise taxes moving forward. Uh, right now, we think our fund balance really won't change much at the end of the year. Uh, revenues, we expect to kind of hit right in line with expenditures come year end, the total budget being ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars for Seventh Avenue M S D. As a reminder, a broad majority of these costs for these two M S Ds are contracted services for hanging baskets, landscaping, pressure washing, general maintenance of the districts. So lastly, we wanna kind of like bring it all together, we're we're about done here, so uh, just wanna show you like the holistic customer impact. uh, just want to show you like the holistic customer impact. These are just a couple of examples. There's whole swath of how customers may be impacted. Um, so the chart at the top is going to show you a a resident with a, who owns property at the value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a business that owns property at five hundred thousand dollars of value, and then a business on Main Street that owns property at a value of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the total proposed changes, right, so we've got three cent tax increase on the property rate. Uh, two cent tax decrease on Main Street, a general sanitation increase of three dollars and fifty cents for residential, uh, stormwater increases on average for the the vast majority. I've got, let's see, got the numbers here. There's only a hundred and sixty non-residential that don't fall in this range uh of twenty one dollars to thirty five dollars uh per per business. Uh, the water increase on the base is about ninety one cents and about seventy three cents per thousand on volume. Sewer seventy three cents and sixty one cents respectively. So if you look at the resident, the monthly property tax increase is about six dollars and twenty five cents per month, three dollars and fifty cents for sanitation. There's no change in stormwater for residents. They're already at five dollars. Water and sewer, uh, three dollars and forty cents per month, and sewer, two dollars and fifty six per month. So a total annual or total monthly impact on our resident is about fifteen dollars and seventy one cents with all the fees and taxes combined. Uh, a business, I've assumed a little bit higher water usage. Twelve dollars and fifty cents on the property tax rate per month, two dollars on sanitation. The twenty one dollar average for stormwater. Uh, water at five dollars and six cents and sewer at three dollars and seventy eight cents for a total forty four dollars and thirty four cents per month. And then on Main Street, the one difference being the two cent tax decrease puts in that four dollars and seventeen cents per month for the property tax change for Main Street. It's for thirty six dollars a month. And that is the recommended budget and we will stand by to answer any questions.
I think that this chart just further accentuates the fact that, you know, for an average family, their you know, expenses are basically increasing average at two fifty a month or a year. Businesses are at least five hundred dollars a year increased expenses for them. And so, and that's just with the three cent tax increase, not proposed maybe six or seven cent down the road. And I just think we need to be um, you know, it's not like we're spending frivolously, we're being very conservative about our spending, but, you know, the cost of services has continued to rise. And I just don't think it's fair to continue putting that burden on, you know, property owners. So all the more reason for the argument.
For sales tax.
Yes.
Yeah. And to keep that smart growth going and pouring fuel on that fire, getting things like Project Wheel in our community.
Oh, that reminds me, I have a question. I wrote it down, but I can ask it because we stopped for a moment. Uh, and that is, so for example, Project Wheel or or um, the uh Clear Creek um housing development, practically, when does something like that become taxable on property taxes? When they get a CO or or when does that happen?
The the property is going to be valued every annually. Once the property exchanges hands, it will be valued at what it was, and then it will begin increasing as personal and real property becomes tangible.
Right, so my question is like, in the middle of a construction, you don't change the, or is the value of it changed?
It would establish value at on their regular schedule. So wherever that property is, at that point in time, it was valued at that point.
Particularly January first, so um, they'll value it and evaluate it as a January first and that'll carry through for the next year.
But even if it's like, like, for example, the Hennesville High School building is partially built, they will increase the value based upon a partially built building?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, whatever permits are like currently out at that time, those are submitted to the tax department and then they assess based off of the permitting process that's present at that date.
Even if it's not a finished turnkey product yet. Okay, got it.
But that's why it says it's the chicken takes twenty four, thirty six months to, you know, get something all the way, ready for us to receive, but.
Has ARP funding possibly uh thrown into some of this equation?
So at this point, uh, the only way ARP is affected is has been removing the special appropriations expense out of the budget that that money will be removed and covered under ARP. Um, other than that, um
Is affecting water and sewer.
Are we going to recoup some of?
Yeah, so we're not, we're not going to have to raise rates for uh Laurel Park improvements.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah, that's the other piece. Yeah, there's, there's some capital improvements in Laurel Park, the uh, the expenditure for that fleet. We were planning to use ARP funding for there too. So that is money that we don't have to budget into the rate increase. Thank you for reminding me of that. So.
Has that been taken into consideration in this water sewer budget?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
There are no other questions. I think we can break for lunch and plan to be back here at one fifteen.
Yep. Senator Edwards will be here, um, like presentation and then there's nothing else after that. Um, actually, we did the presentation. You'll be free for the afternoon.
Thank you.